Signify that problem.
No, I don't think so.
No, the individual problem.
You can have something.
No, it's private.
Yes, an individual's problem, no, no, not yet. That's not something that... When, when it was sold, it took a long time in terms of their moving forward of the plans that were approved, but the actual ordinance goes back, goes back easily, goes back easily for 10 years.
It's following to the front.
The, the original ordinance, to be honest with you, may not apply to this level of law as we know about it, but I will tell you unequivocally that the then-mayor and the commissioner at that point in time, okay, because I was there, okay, then motivation, major motivation, okay, that they decided that the car is a commercial car. One moment, please, Senator.
Yes, sir. Follow me, sir.
That, that the commercial car lot had to be redeveloped, and the reason for it was not modern, the reason was that permit higher development would make sure that it wasn't necessary for the regular homeowners.
Mr. Asbell, you'll let me know when you're ready, sir.
That was no better. My mayor, I'm finished.
Thank you, sir.
Done then.
All right, I'm gonna do this again because I can't with you. Okay.
Yes, you can. I have the most faith in the world.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City of West Miami Regular City Commission Meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, May 5th. It is 7:34, and the first thing I'm gonna say is, I am so happy to be back in here with everyone together. This is, this is amazing. I, 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 I miss being in here, and, and I think it's great that our first night back, we have all of you here with us. So, the public is here. This is what we're here for, and it's happening on our first night back. No more virtual, we're all in person, first and third Wednesday of the month at 7:30, so you are all welcome every single time in person with us. So, I'm happy to be back, I'm happy to see everyone, happy to have staff back in here with us. To my colleagues, I, I'm very happy to see you face-to-face, not on Zoom. So, why do you look so sad? Smile. Aren't you happy to be back, Vice Mayor? Anyway, okay, so, Madam Clerk.
He is smiling.
He's what?
He is smiling.
Madam Clerk, um, oh, there's no reading of the Zoom meeting. So, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, Madam Manager, invocation, please.
Yes, let's rise tonight, for it is a special night. Lord, tonight, we thank you for the privilege of reuniting in person after a long 14 months due to COVID-19. We are blessed by the opportunity of getting back to a sense of normalcy in, in the very near future, and for this, we rejoice in your name. Blessed are those whose faith has carried them during these most difficult and unprecedented moments in time. We cover our leaders in prayer so that they're able to make the best decisions for the people that they represent. We pray for our city employees and for our West Miami families. We pray for all the children who have endured a difficult school year so that they can look ahead at a better academic year, starting in '21, '22, and being able to finally socialize with friends and family. We also pray for all the students in their graduating class, the class of 2021. We pray for our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, as well as our military and their safe return home. We humbly pray to you to guide us with wisdom and humbleness. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Chief Avila, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, inviolable with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Aaron Truitt, roll call. Mayor Ron Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for April 21st, 2021 Regular Commission High-Grip Meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Call the vote.
Are all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you, 5-0.
Next item.
Item five, public comments, and for the public comments, we have a couple of petitions, and the first person...
Madam Clerk, point of privilege, if I may, before we start all the comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
I, I know that usually we do have a time limit on speakers. Tonight, I am waiving that, there is no time limit on the speakers. You may speak as long as you want, I wanna hear everything you have to say. Go ahead, please.
First speaker, Michael Smart. Please approach the podium.
Can we order pizza?
Yeah.
Mr. Smart.
Do I keep this off?
I won't be able to hear you.
Good.
Or understand you.
We like to see your face and your expression.
Exactly.
Same here. Okay.
Before we start housekeeping, whenever you approach the podium, if you would start with your name and your address for the record, please. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, my name is Michael Smart. I live at 901 Southwest 63rd Avenue, and it's a pleasure to be here to see everybody this evening. As you each know, I did send out an email that I think each of you received about a week ago in regards to two particular problems that we have as residents. Some of these people behind me share the same issues that I do, and actually, I'm surprised there's not a lot more, because I have about 20-plus signatures here from about maybe 15 houses, and that's not even going to all of them. If you wouldn't mind, Madam Mayor, can I read the email out while I'm at the podium?
Yes, sir, you may.
Okay. This is addressed to everybody here on the dais. "The following issues are of grave concern for single-family home residents in the city of West Miami that are adjacent to the Celeste Almada Apartments on Southwest 63rd Avenue and 9th Street. During the proposed development stage, the issue of parking was brought up multiple times, and we, as the residents, were assured by the developers that this would not be a problem, as they would have more than ample parking available in the parking garage. In addition, it was stated no parking was going to be done on Southwest 9th Street. We now understand that those were merely words and empty meaning and intended to win those of us who were leaning in favor of the development. Two years later, the parking has become a major problem for single-family home residents neighboring the buildings and West Miami police who are constantly giving parking tickets for illegally parked vehicles close to the circle on 9th Street adjacent to the double-yellow lines. Those who know they are vulnerable to getting a parking ticket at these locations are now parking in front of residents' homes, making it difficult for residents entering or departing their homes and not allowing their own guest parking spaces in front of their homes. To me, this is totally unacceptable. We need signs posted for "Single-Family Home Permit Parking Only," where all others will be ticketed and towed away, making it easier for our police to perform their job. This also enforces much-needed respect for single-family home residents that are being inconvenienced and where, at times, those violations have been seen to be disrespectful and confrontational towards our neighbors. These buildings are presently not fully occupied, so the issue will be much greater, and thus a heavier burden for all concerned when the buildings have met their threshold. The second issue is to confront the matter of pet owners who residing in these buildings. Despite the convenience and installation of dog litter bins and, in addition to the residents who are picking, who are placing "Pick Up After Your Dog" signs, there still remains a frustrated noncompliance of some apartment residents who do not follow the rules. As a resident of this city, I respectfully requesting the city to act in an expeditious manner to resolve these problems before they worsen and therefore create a bigger dilemma than what already exists." Now, with that said, every day, I, I'm taking photographs of cars that are illegally parked. My issue, what, at least one of them, is that where the yellow lines are on all four corners of 9th and 63rd, there are no signs indicating that people cannot park there. The police have been doing an awesome job, but mainly, they're having their problem on 9th Street at the corner of 63rd going east and west. It's getting worse. This building's about 70% completed, if I've got my facts right. When it gets fuller, these people and their guests are gonna be coming down 63rd more, and they are already going up 10th, because I've spoken to the neighbors on 10th, and there's been a lot of frustration that I have heard from a lot of these residents. Unfortunately, the residents that I have spoken to feel that coming here is not going to do anything. Their frustration is gonna live on, and I think, as a resident who is experiencing the same problem, I, I don't see where that's an answer. I'm not here for myself tonight. I'm here because we all have a problem here. We all live here. I'm coming here tonight because, to me, there has to be a solution to this problem. And it's two problems that I've brought up to your attention, I'm sure you're gonna hear more tonight from others and what they're saying. Walking down 9th Street the other day, there's one gentleman that told me, and I just met all these people, that he's so sick of it, he's ready to sell his house. Second gentleman says he even parks a motorcycle in front of his property, and these parkers move the motorcycle so they can park in front of his property. They've broken the motorcycle twice. Further, I will go down, and it's sad, I see people who are elderly, and they don't wanna confront anybody, so they see all these cars parked in front of their yard, and on top of that, they're throwing out Corona beer bottles and McDonald's bags and everything else. Guys, this is our residence. This building that was built here, I was all for it, because it made a huge improvement to this community. But if you are the governing body, to me, you need to find a solution to fix this problem. I don't wanna hear that it can't be done. I don't wanna hear that the county will not let you do it. I spoke to the county already, and there's further discussion going on, and I've been told by the county, and I'm getting conflicting information, that like 9th Street, 10th Street, 63rd Avenue, these streets are what you can do, not what the county should do. So, I'm hearing two different stories on this, and I wanna get to the bottom of it, and I will go to the county and speak to, I think she's, she's new in the county now, her name is Claudia Diaz, and she works at Public Works. We've been in touch with her this week, and she has not really given me an answer of resolve. I've been speaking to her secretary, and we are hoping that something was gonna come here today before I came to this meeting. So, I'm worried that this is only gonna get worse. The police already have their hands full, they call to many other things despite just this, but if we have the right posting on things that can help the residents, as well as help the police, then I think it benefits all of us. Now, I proposed a sign, and I don't know if I sent it to any of you here, but it's a sign that says it's for "Single-Family Resident Parking Only." In addition to that, the residents in those homes would get a decal, and they can place it on the dashboard of that guest's car, so if a policeman comes along, okay, I know it's for a single-family residence, so I'm not gonna trouble them, but these people don't care. Where they're parking, they don't care, they are partially blocking people's driveways. If you are 70, 80 years of age without being discriminatory, they're having a hard time getting out and into their driveways. It's only gonna get worse. So, I'm here to ask for help. I'm here to offer me services that if you want me to help you, I'll help you. I've got 35 years with the county, I know people, I, let's try and get it done. So, the other issue, second issue, is the pets. They don't care. They walk their dogs around, I have a hedge in front of my property, and believe it or not, they may pick up the poop in the bag, but they stick it in my hedge. I mean, is that respectful, or is that disrespectful? And I haven't found the person who has done it yet, but God help him when I do, because I have to be the one going in the hedge now and taking that out. So, I have put up no poop signs in front of my house, it has helped a little bit, but my neighbors across the road, they have dogs going all over their property because they have no hedge, no fence, and they don't care if their dogs are littering in there or not. So, that is another problem, and it's not only me. If you go down 9th Street, you're gonna hear the same thing. If you go down 10th Street towards Commissioner Sosa's house, it's the same thing. So, I'm here with a plea, can we work it out together and not just close our eyes and say nothing can be done, because to me, to every problem, there is a solution. And that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Mr. Smart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next, next name?
Rafael Figueras.
Remember name and address for the record, please, sir. You may, you may remove your mask.
Thank you.
You may remove your mask.
Good evening, my name is Rafael Figueras, and I live at 6278 Southwest 9th Street for over five decades. I thought that I was gonna live the last days of my life in this beautiful community that I call peaceful, middle-class, but now, with the construction of those two buildings, it is impossible to park, to pick up trash. I'm gonna be a little blunt, but I have picked up with gloves, used you-know-what to prevent children, twice. Then parking is unbelievable, I mean, I can't get back out of my house. I did send photos to Alina, I spoke to a police officer, he says he couldn't do anything. Then I found out that if this is the end of my driveway, as it heads into the street, there is a distance of five feet that should be allowed for me to back up. Now, 9th Street, it is a narrow street. If you have two pickup trucks or vans, and then my neighbor packs his van across the street, I cannot turn at all, and I don't have a big car, I have a Honda Accord. Something else, my brother can't visit me, disabled, with a van. My sister-in-law told me, hey, we just can't get into the driveway. Very important, something else, the third Thursday of every month, what is it called? The sweeper truck to clean the streets? I don't know how many times, the streets are totally blocked. Consequently, we're gonna have problems with the sewer system, and the water is gonna have to gulate. I have to say that I second the motion of what Mr. Smart said. He completed his complaint, and he presented it to you guys the proper way. Mr. Penna, you visited me about a year and a half ago, and I showed you what happened after I spent $13,000 in my papers that lead into the street when the construction began and they put that trailer, all of the big trucks.
Mr. Figueras, if you, if you don't mind, with all due respect, just another housekeeping, it's customary to address the commission and not the staff.
Apologize.
No, no, and, and, trust me.
First time.
No, I know, so I just, I mean, I wanna be sure that we, we follow, you know...
The protocol, okay.
Protocol, so yes, it's customary to, to address the commission, everyone's gonna hear you, but yeah, address the commission, please, and, and with all due respect, I say that, sir. Continue.
I explained him.
Continue.
Sure, I explained, stand corrected. I explained him that my papers were, the entrance to my, to my driveway was broken. As a matter of fact, they broke the curb, which was replaced after by, I imagine, the owners of the, those two buildings, but life is not the same. I take pride of the upkeep of my house, and I feel like, and I told Mike, I'm getting out of here, I'm selling. I'm selling, and I know it's not gonna solve the problem, because it will be inherited by the new owners. Just finished painting the house, the yardman was there today. You should go to my house and see what's on the front, uh, what is it called? The Styrofoam, where you put food? Well, it's there with the plastic utensils. I don't use any of that. Again, like Mr. Smart said, beer, empty beer cans, you name it, it's there. This used to be a beautiful community. I recall when, I have to say, there was an Oriental guy, and I'm talking 1970s, he used to fix the streets, and they had flowers and things like that. After that, things went down a little bit, but we wanna continue the beauty of West Miami because it keeps the property value up. I'm not in the real estate business of flipping houses. I lived there, like I said at the beginning of our, of my speech, I wanna have a peaceful ending at my house, but I don't think I will be able to, because those two buildings are detrimental. I understand they produce revenue for the city, which is an effecating thing for us to keep with the services, you know, but if I'm missing anything, I second the motion of what Mr. Smart said.
How long did you say you've been here?
Over five decades.
Over, that's what I thought, okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure, I thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next.
Iris Lopez.
Yes, good evening. My name is Iris Lopez.
Lower the mic, so it's perfect.
I'm 6326 Southwest in 9th Street. My English is not very good.
That's okay.
I don't know if I can speak Spanish.
Would you like the manager to translate for you? You may.
Yeah.
Okay, just speak slowly so that she can translate for you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Nosotros vivimos detrás del edificio.
We live right behind the building.
Estamos pasando problemas muy grandes con ese edificio.
We're enduring very difficult situations with the building.
En los parqueos.
Regarding parking.
Gritando mucho, gritan mucho en la madrugada.
There's a lot of noise coming from people talking loud during the midnight hours.
Tengo una niña de 19 años que tiene miedo.
I have a 19-year-old daughter who is afraid.
Se levanta a las 2 de la mañana corriendo al cuarto porque están gritando, fumando marihuana.
She gets up at 2 o'clock in the morning because people are screaming, and there is marijuana, they're, they're smoking marijuana coming from the building.
Mi esposo no puede entrar muchas veces a la casa porque está bloqueado el driveway.
My husband cannot get into the house at times because the driveway is blocked.
Yo vengo de mi trabajo, de la 8, entro a la 63 cuando voy a doblar para mi casa a la 9, no puedo.
I come home from work, I turn on, off of 8th Street into 63rd Avenue, I take a right, and at times, I cannot enter my home.
Tenemos un gran problema en la ciudad.
And we have a very serious problem in the city.
Yes. Estamos aquí para que nos ayuden.
We're here, so that, we're seeking your assistance.
Yeah.
Gracias, señora.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next, next name?
Frank Hernandez.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Hernandez. My address is 6387 Southwest 9th Street. I was ready to say a lot, but I give it to this gentleman and lady, I say everything I wanna say, really. It's a total disaster from 63 to 64th Avenue and 9th Street. That is a total disaster, and I'm not here to blame no, not the city manager, nobody. You guys are doing a great job, and I love you guys, really, but that place there, that building, has brought a lot of headaches for me, a lot of headaches. I get up around 5:30 in the morning, and when I get up, there's cars all over the place, over my driveway. Mike, I think he mentioned Corona beer, there's someone here that drinks a lot of Corona beer, because I found them almost every single day on the floor in my garage. So, this is, uh, this is from good going bad. It's not the same sidewalk that we used to have before, it's not the same city. It's the same city, but our sidewalk is in bad shape. I hope you guys could do something about it, because like the gentleman says, I'm old right now, I'm ready to retire, and I was, you know, I'm wishing to have some peace, and, and there is some confrontational people out here, believe it or not. There's some confrontational people, because I have asked in good manners, you know, why do you park here when you have parking inside? Oh, we gotta pay $50 for each parking, or something like that. I don't know if that's true or not. That's why they park over there. Another thing is, they tell us to park over here. This is what the manager tells us to park over here. So, yeah, you could park here, it's a city, but if you guys could do something for this, I would appreciate, and, you know, so our life would be better than now, really. It's, to me, it's a total disaster. Thank you very much, thank you for help.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
I have a question for...
Let's let, let's let everyone finish, Commissioner, and then we'll, we'll address questions. Next, um, next person, Madam Clerk.
Esteban, I, I can't read this, be, Jones? Shones?
No? Okay.
You won't speak? Okay.
If you change, if you change your mind, sir, just let me know. If you change your mind, let me know.
Hi, good evening. So, I've been a resident, I was born and raised...
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Carla Lorenzo, and the home address that I'm referring to is 5771 Southwest 11th Street. Do you need my main home address as well? I live in the city as well, my other property.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so 5810, Southwest 10th Street. So, this property, I was getting ready to sell, I actually had the closing today, and it's when I was notified that there is a lien.
I don't need, yeah? Okay, then, let me know.
Not yet, probably.
Not yet?
You gotta wait for your agenda, or it comes up.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So, you're on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, we have a mitigation phase.
We, we will call you.
She's getting warmed up.
She's getting warmed up, that was good. That was good, good practice. You got all the nerves out, so now you're good, you're ready. I like that, that was, that was initiative, I like it. You're good. Okay, next, next, next speaker?
Yes, Dubiel, Dubiel Fajardo.
Buenas noches, necesito hablar español.
Claro que sí. Good evening, I need to speak Spanish. Su nombre y dirección para el récord.
Dubiel Fajardo.
Dubiel Fajardo.
6316 Southwest.
6316, Southwest 9th Street.
Okay. Lo que le vengo a decir ya lo han escuchado antes.
What I'm here to tell you, you have listened to before.
Pero la propiedad donde yo vivo está justo frente a la puerta de acceso o de salida de...
The property where I reside is immediately in front, the access door, immediately in front of the property where I reside.
Entonces, lo que le quiero decir es que, constantemente, lo que es mi casa, el driveway, ellos lo usan para dar el U-turn, porque no tienen salida, ve?
What I would like to express is that visitors or people coming from the building continuously use my driveway as a way to back up or do a U-turn.
U-turn. Están usando la dirección de mi casa para dar la dirección de Uber, para que lo recogen.
They're giving my property address to drivers from Uber so that they can get picked up at that, my local, my home.
Porque no lo pueden recoger por la 8.
Because they cannot, the Uber drivers cannot stop along Southwest 8th Street.
Los delivery de la pizzería y de las comidas llegan a mi casa.
The deliveries for food service arrive at my home.
Tocan la puerta para preguntarme si está la persona.
They knock on the doors, and they ask me if the person is there.
En la mañana, cuando yo me levanto, en la puerta esta de entrada, no sé cuál es la, la posición del edificio, la entrada o no.
When I wake up in the morning, not knowing what the position of the building is...
Se mantienen fumando, tomando... Se mantienen fumando, tomando o conversando.
There's people that are having conversations, drinking, smoking.
Okay, no tengo problema con el que fuma o con el que toma.
I have no problem with those who smoke or drink.
Yo estoy criando niños. Vivo con mi mamá, con mi esposa, con la niña.
But I'm raising, I'm raising a child. I live with my family, my mom.
Okay. Para seguir más, el, el building, no sé, uno o dos tiene piscina, el otro no.
There's one of the buildings that has a pool. He doesn't know which one it is.
Las personas cruzan, tú sabes, en la forma no más correcta vestido.
So people are crossing the street.
Legalmente queda sin la camisa.
In what I consider inappropriate clothing, at times without a shirt, wearing a shirt.
En la mañana, si usted sale bien temprano a las cinco, van a ver que las 63 y las nueve, exactamente.
In the morning, if you get up early, around five o'clock in the morning, you will see for yourselves that there is like a gym.
Okay, entonces, más que todo, yo vengo para plantear mi problema y escuchar algún tipo de solución.
Mostly I'm here tonight to present my problems and my issues and seek a solution.
Quisiera creer que lo que estoy haciendo es lo correcto.
I want to think that what I'm doing.
Problema y quisiera darle.
What I'm doing by coming here is correct by presenting my issues.
Eh, posibles soluciones o algo que yo pudiera aportar para ver si ustedes lo tienen en cuenta.
And hopefully you will consider finding the solutions here this evening.
La puerta que está atrás, no sé, la entrada del edificio original, el zoning como la tiene, pero esta puerta que está atrás, si limitan el acceso, van a limitar la entrada y la dejada de personal de Uber ahí, las comidas y todo, porque van a tenerse que ver obligados a entrar por la 63.
If, if the back door is, is closed, it's going to limit the deliveries that they make and the food orders that they make. And so it's going to add an impact to the other area.
Si limitan lo que es la entrada esa, extienden la línea amarilla y ponen un sign, por lo menos se van a ver más limitado, usar la nueve y usen más la 63. Entonces, lo otro que le quiero decir es, un ejemplo, por la 63, el building se reservó el espacio del approach de la ciudad para residentes solamente del edificio. Yo no puedo parkar en el edificio en la 63. Ellos sí pueden parquear en mi propiedad.
Okay, so he's saying that.
Reservarme ese espacio para mí.
That he would like to know whether he can reserve a portion. Usted puede, por favor, repetir la parte de.
El, el, lo que es la 63.
The area of 63rd Avenue.
El, el approach es de la ciudad.
The city's approach.
Sí.
The, the city right of way.
Sí. Está reservado solo para residentes el edificio.
Is only reserved for residents of the building.
Yo no puedo parquear ahí.
I am not able to park there.
Puedo reservar mi espacio y poner un sign también.
May I reserve a spot there and place my name there so that I can park my vehicle there?
¿Dónde es la, la entrada principal del zoning del edificio, el número del edificio?
Where is the main entrance of the building pursuant to the zoning? Where is the, the main entrance to that building so that I am made aware?
Eso realmente, la puerta de atrás es una puerta de escape, de acceso.
Is the rear door an access door or an exit, emergency exit door?
Porque se ha convertido en la puerta de acceso porque es la más fácil. Por la ocho no pueden entrar ni bajar nadie.
It has increasingly been used for, as an access door because they don't use the front door.
No sé si este argumento es suficiente, pero realmente le recalco una vez más.
Argument.
Si les limitan el acceso, extienden la línea amarilla y ponen un sign, por lo menos algo pudiera mejorarla.
And you actually widen the, or expand the yellow line, it may help the residents along Southwest Main Street for, on the parking issue.
Eso es todo lo que le tengo que aportar, y muchas gracias.
This is all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Gracias.
Gracias, senor.
Madam Clerk?
No more speakers, Madam Mayor.
No more speakers. Elliot wanted to speak, but he's not here. Could you let him know he's up? Mr. Penn, let him know he's, he's next. Anyone changed their mind and didn't want to speak and wants to speak now? Or hasn't signed up? You may still speak and sign up after.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The first thing I'm going to say.
Raise the mic, Elliot.
The first thing I'm going to say, and I know how disturbed you all are in terms of the presentation, how these people are suffering.
Can hear him. Yeah, if something's, I can't hear you, Elliot, can you?
How.
There, there we go.
How disturbed and concerned and sensitive you all are in terms of hearing what you're hearing and as these people are suffering. I'm more disturbed because I'm 78, with a lot of experience. I know that the service that this city performs, and in particular, extra service and bending over for senior citizens, but service for citizens in its totality is excellent. Better than the service I was, I'm sorry. Elliot Asbell, Sunnyside Motel, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157.
Thank you, sir.
Seventy-eight, the light switch goes on and off, unfortunately. In any event, I'm more upset because I listen, and I hope I'm wrong. I know the law. I know traffic. I know poop. Okay. And in terms of two o'clock in the morning or four o'clock in the morning, you are dealing with people who have no respect, I've heard said, and no concern.
Elliot, Elliot.
And no.
This way.
This way. And no concern for the people that are citizens other than those dwelling in that apartment complex, and they probably don't have concern for one another. The police cannot act where there is a car that is legally parked, okay? This city, with all of its intentions, is not 24/7. Just like in my business, which you know I run very well and am concerned with everybody, we're not 24/7. Things happen. I do have the power to correct maltreatment on the part that takes place on my property. You all and the police don't have the power to deal with this situation. Nor do you have the power to pay for and get mental psychiatry for these people who have no conscience. Okay? I'm speaking reality. So I have to say, whatever you come up with, maybe I'm being short-sighted. I know where your hearts are. I'm here for more than 50 years, here. Not living here, in business here. And I know where the hearts of each of these gentlemen and ladies are when, and the administration, and the city attorney, where it comes to how they feel.
Elliot, this.
How they feel about tenants, residents, and how they want, as you want, to have the city beautiful. I used to call this a little villa, gorgeous little villa. Okay, it's no longer a little village. It's grown, okay? The motivation, your motivation for these high-rise apartments was you know what your expenses are escalating. You never want to raise taxes on any of the homeowners and residents. So your motivation, and you all know I was a part of it, okay? Your sole motivation, you knew it would change the dynamics of the city, but it was a squawk to protect the present residents and future residents against higher taxes because the commercial buildings would yield the income, and then therefore you would not have to raise taxes. You're always very, very cautious about raising taxes or expenses for your homeowners. Mostly senior citizens, and then you come down. So I hope I'm being short-sighted, but I have to tell you, I don't think these people are going to find a solution, or you're capable of finding a solution for them, other than suffering with them. If you do, I'm totally in support of it, and it may even come down to financial support, which all of you know periodically I've been involved in. This is a terrible situation, but I really think certain things are out of your power. Dade County doesn't have jurisdiction here unless it's, you know, one of their roads or the state roads, whatever. Yes, it's your responsibility. But you're not out there 24/7, two o'clock in the morning, you're going to pick up somebody with a Corona beer as they throw it out? Please. Please. See, so in terms of reality, it's not for want of finding a solution, it's almost, and I hope I'm wrong, impossible. Bear with me, I intended to say nothing this evening, but, and thankfully, a number of the speakers were very kind, and they complimented all of you, and they say it's not you, they know, but they're desperate. They're turning for anywhere and everywhere to find an answer, okay? Maybe they can have, like, Neighbor Watch and citizens of younger people, 35, 40, or whatever, who are willing to go out and enforce the neighborhood. That could work, what you need, that kind of help, just like you have Neighborhood Watch. Okay. I can't, I just, I like to look at people's face. I'm sorry.
I'm reminding you. I'm reminding you.
Okay, now let me say what I wanted to say in basically two points. I want to go back to the April 7th Commission meeting because when I left here, I had two thoughts that I want to share with the administration and share with the mayor, vice mayor, and commissioners. Firstly, on that agenda, there were a lot of proposals on how to deal with extra public cards and future giveaways, if you will, in terms of federal care packages or as this thing is moving forward. I want to say that for me and the audience, it was very easy that I could listen to everyone, and this is not common for me, you all know me very well. I could listen to everyone and I could say I have here, and I know each person that spoke had given this a great deal of thought. A great deal of thought.
The, the thing fell off, Elliot. The, what do you call it? Yes, that.
The rubber. Always disruptive. You can't take me in place nicely. And, and, and in any event, I knew there was a great deal of thought, and I like that. I like that. Furthermore, I think each and every, I thought then, and I think now, each and every one of the proposals had a certain amount of merit. As I listened to the various different proposals, I could say this one, that one, the other one, they have merit. And that the intentions of the people that were speaking were good intentions. Here's a problem. We've got to find a solution. Yes, there are alternatives. Let's try to pick the best alternative. How we can disagree about the best alternative? I think you did a wonderful job, and personally wanted to say, you expressed yourselves, you thought beforehand, you thought during. I don't know that you thought after, but certainly the end result, in my opinion, was a fantastic result. Not that others would have been terrible. This was, in my opinion, a fantastic decision. Secondly, from the same meeting, and this I need to say, and I probably will be disagreed with, but I felt this a long time, and I think it needs to be said. The word economics came up during this agenda item, I think twice. I know the mayor reacted to the word economics at one point.
I did.
And I understand, certainly those that know me know that I would describe myself as a fiscal conservative, okay? So yeah, I think about economics. There is no doubt, at least in my mind, and there shouldn't be doubt in anyone's mind that this city bends over backwards and understands the truth that our senior citizens are at best a little above struggling, at best, okay? And to commend this city, you have done many things and followed through, no matter what the budget was or constraints, in making them a priority. You made them a priority in food. You, you made them a priority in terms of your property taxes, where they get a double exemption. And this is justified, but I have to tell you, in my opinion, and I just think you ought to think about it, okay? That they are no longer, in my opinion, the group of residents that struggle most in your city. If you want to go back 10 years or perhaps a little more, there has been a dynamic shift. And I'm saying to you, couples that are in the age bracket of approximately 35, married, two children. They are struggling more than any of your senior citizens. They don't have Medicare for medical insurance. They don't have meal subsidies. It doesn't matter how much they earn. Some of your senior citizens, and I'm pointing fingers, God bless them, they rent out their homes and have additional income, okay? But I don't begrudge them anything. They more than paid their dues. But don't make your policies so constricted in terms of budget needs that they are the one and only priority. You are missing a large segment, 35 and older, two children. Any of you that are parents know what the expense, ongoing expense of children in a family is. And the sad fact is, in the private sector, not unionized, in the private sector, any man attaining the age of 35 has very little upward mobility. You either are well on your way and established a promising career, and if by 35 you haven't reached it, 90% of you are not going to reach it. Yes, you may get periodic raises, small. So all I ask you is a shift in thinking. Not to look away from the seniors. They most needly, necessarily need everything you're doing for them and more. But on the other hand, I would like you, policy-wise, to think about your budgets and the need of the middle, middle class or lower middle class, 35, family man, two children. They are being neglected, and they are struggling. There was a comment of, thank God they have the ability to work. So many people have lost their jobs during COVID. Yes, thank God for those that are still able to work and are lucky to still able to work. But I know in regard to my people, and I'm sure you all feel in regard to your staff, not only are they lucky to have a job, you're lucky to have them. And so is every business owner. So I just want to introduce this new thinking because I think this commission, not you particularly, this is drifting years, has gone into the myth that the seniors are the only ones that are suffering, and they need to be taken care of. And somebody else, well, whatever, whatever. Thank you for your attention. God bless you all, and I hope I'm wrong in terms of the grievances of the group behind me. I know what your intent is. I know what your heart is. I think you've got a high brick wall.
Thank you, Elliot. Madam Clerk, before we proceed. Madam Clerk, before we proceed, I'd like to call Chief Avila to the podium. I know the chief has been working, as you all have said, you've spoken to many officers that have been out, so the chief is very aware of what's going on, and I know he's, I'd like to hear from him what we have already done to address your concerns.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Manager. Yes, we've been at this issue with the parking, want to take it by steps. Our officers are writing up the people that park too close to the corner where the circle is at on 9th Street.
Would this Plexiglas get closer to the microphone?
Okay. So the officers are writing, the vehicles have parked too close to the intersection, if you will, where the circle's at. That is the only violation that we can write them for. They have to be a certain amount of feet from the corner, in other words, from the intersection. So anybody who's in violation of that, they get written up. Obviously, if they're blocking a driveway, they get written up. But other than that, I really don't have any other violation that I can write them for. They have all the right in the world, based on Florida Statute 316, 1945, to park along the soil. We can write them up for parking on the wrong side of the soil, in other words, parking in the wrong direction. That's very rare there. They usually come in on 63rd Avenue, and then they make a right, and usually they're parked right there, along the right-hand side, unless there's no other parking. So from our standpoint, that's about all that we can do. If we catch them littering, or if we catch them dumping, or any of that, you know, we handle it that way. The other thing we've done is, I've sent the NRO, we have an officer who's an NRO, Neighborhood Resource Officer, he has met with the management over there, in reference to the parking issue, the litter issue, and the poop. So affectionately, we call them the Parking and Poop Patrol.
You don't tell them that, do you?
I mean, he does, he does what he can. He's met with the management a couple of times, he goes over there at least once a week. The management of the building has sent out an email blast to everybody to make sure that they pick up their poop, you know, when they take their dogs out. They've talked about the parking, and yes, there is a $50 parking fee for parking an extra car. In other words, you get a free parking, each apartment for one car, if you want a second car, you have to pay $50. And there is nothing that we, as a police department, can do about that. And once again, I heard some other things that have been brought up. For example, I think, this gentleman, I forget his name.
Rafael.
And he's showing me, right now, on his camera there, there is no law, none whatsoever, that says how many feet you have to be from a parking entrance, in other words, the approach into a driveway. As long as you are not blocking the driveway, it's perfectly legally parked, and there is no statute that we can write them for. This is a matter of neighbors being courteous, and I can't cite them for being courteous, I can't arrest them for not being courteous, I can't do anything, other than unfortunately feel for the residents that are being made uncomfortable with this situation. So the statute is 316, 1945, if anybody wants to go ahead and look at that statute, it's in the computer, it's Florida State statute, and it says there, it says exactly where everybody can and cannot park.
Chief, thank you, Chief, we'll open up the table for questions, thank you, Chief, for that. Mr. Figueres, you wanted to say something else?
I think Commissioner.
Well, I was going to let you, I'm going to open up the table for questions, for the chief and for whoever else. Yes, please, go right ahead, yes.
Chief, then, what should I do?
Well, no, Mr. Figu-
If I cannot-
I thought, you have to, you have to address us, you have to address us. Go to the podium, go to the podium, please. Thank you, Chief.
What should I do, then, if I cannot back out? Go over the curb? I have a low-sitting car on our court?
As long as the soil is not being, I mean, the parking approach is not being blocked, you cannot write.
But I cannot turn?
You cannot get out, call the police, we'll respond. If you cannot get out, then we'll go ahead and try to figure out what we're going to do.
I was going to say, like-
But if the cop can get in your car and drive the car out for you-
Not going over the curb.
It's not a violation.
Not going over the curb, I don't park, I don't want my car to be damaged.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, I know, so I was, yes. Rafael, thank you, but, I mean, I love to speak directly to the chief, but I shouldn't have, but, but thank you, I know. What I'd like you to do, if, you know, later on, or tomorrow, whatever, if you want to speak to the chief personally, you're more than welcome to come and speak to him. But here in the chambers, it is protocol, and I'm just getting into trouble with my attorney, but I allowed it, and so going forward, yes, you're more than welcome to speak to him after the meeting, or in person, but my attorney's going to get angry at me if I allow that again. But thank you, sir. Chief, thank you for speaking to-
And again, Madam Mayor, we don't have a problem, they can call us 20 times a night. We'll respond every time somebody calls. And somebody's blocking his driveway, we're more than happy to go ahead and cite him and tell him. But if he's not blocking, and it's only three feet from the driveway, there's no statute, I cannot write something that's not illegal, and I can't have my guys do it, and I won't.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone else have anything to say? Otherwise, I'm going to open it up to the table. Yes?
I have a question.
Commissioner, go right ahead.
Can we start with a question? Chief, this state law that you mentioned, you said that it does not address the distance that the vehicles can park from the driveway?
Correct, does not.
It does not?
Doesn't talk about it at all.
Okay, so it does not mention it at all, so basically, there's no mention of it? So, and state law supersedes all laws?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so since there is, and this might be a question for you, Mr. Attorney, since there's no law stipulating on that particular issue-
Correct.
Can we, as a city, as a municipality, enact a law that would address that, since it's not being addressed by the state?
I don't know the answer to that, that would have to-
The issue is this, you see, there are certain municipalities have enacted neighborhood-only parking, but neighborhood means anybody that lives in that neighborhood. So parking would be, let's say, to the right, there is a home that is marked for one family, and on the other side, there's a building. Both of them are neighbors.
You're misunderstanding my question.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
My question is, right now, this state law that the chief mentioned, does not address how far a vehicle, or how close a vehicle can park from the driveway of a homeowner.
Right.
So, in particular, in this residence issue here, they are close, they are parking too close to his driveway, almost, you know, almost adjacent to the line where, you know, he needs to back out of his driveway. So, and my question is, since the state does not address that, can we, as a municipality, as a city, address that?
Well, I would have to, I would have to re-
Enact a law where they need to park, you know, five feet, six feet, 10 feet away from the driveway, to allow for a safe, you know, exit.
Exit and exit.
Exit, entrance, exactly, entrance and exit from a driveway. Because if you have, if you have two vehicles that are adjacent, parked on one side and the other, and then there's someone that's parked, you know, on the other side, and, you know, let's say you have a pickup truck, you might not be able to get out. So you need, you need room to be able to angle your vehicle a bit, to be able to get out. So, so if you could please research that for me, for us, it'd be great.
However, let me address this, Chief. Uniform Traffic Act includes parking as well, does it not?
Yes, it does.
Okay. If there's a statute that addresses the Uniform Traffic Act that includes also parking, there's something that I doubt that we could do, I will research it, but there's something that I doubt that we could do in order to address that issue, because that issue is preempted by the state. I will try.
But if that particular issue is not being addressed?
I understand that, but as I say, this is something, normally, I will, I will research it, but normally, that is preempted by the state. Anything that happens to do with traffic and parking is preempted by the state, is it not, Chief?
Yes, it is. Florida State statute.
But they're not addressing this issue.
They're not addressing it because it's not illegal. That's the problem.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, I, what I heard was, the attorney say that he would research it, he obviously cannot, I mean, nobody, no attorney sits there with knowing every statute and every, every, every way around every statute, he has to research it, like every other attorney would have to research it, he's going to do that, and we'll see the result. You know, I understand he's trying to temper the, you know, expectation on it, because of what he does know about it, but he does, you know, you do have to give him time to research the issue, this is the first time he's hearing about it, and, you know, hopefully, there's a good, you know, result there, but he does, he does need to research it, am I right? You need to research it in order to have, you know, correct opinion. So that's, you know, I would, I would ask as well, I think that's a, you know, I was thinking the same thing when I was listening to Mr. Figueres, you know, that might be one avenue to take. But yeah, I would appreciate your researching that as well.
Commissioner, yes, Chief, go ahead.
If I may say, under the, under the statute, it talks about all the things that are illegal, and I want to tell you the three that are called for, for distances. Within 15 feet of a fire hydrant, within 20 feet of a crosswalk at an intersection, which is the one we're citing them for, and within 30 feet upon the approach of any flashing signal. So that is it for distance.
No, I understand that, but like, like, every body of laws, you have to take them together. You can't just take it in one, in one section in three lines. It has to be researched, it's not something that anyone can take with one page, or can take, you know, it has to be researched by, and it has to be by the attorney, and not, you know, I'm an attorney, but not by me, I'll do my research too, and I'll give it to the attorney whenever I can, but at the end of the day, he has to research it for us. And I understand, I get what you're saying, but we have to do it right, we have to make sure that every stone is-
Absolutely. Listen, if they come down with that law, we'll be the first ones out there writing it, so.
Madam Mayor, may I ask something, because I think this, I may have heard the chief on the enforcement piece, are you enforcing traffic citations for those individuals who block driveways, because-
Absolutely, if they're blocked, they're going to get written out.
That is, you know, you're authorized to do that by statute?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and my next question is, are you being called out by neighbors? Do you have calls or logs regarding the nuisance that the lady brought up, the issue of loud noises and disturbing the neighborhood, especially?
I personally am not aware, doesn't mean it doesn't happen. She advised it was happening overnight, so when I come in in the morning, you know, they'll, somebody will tell me, or if they don't tell me, if I look at the worksheet, I may see it, but either way, they need to call, they need to call, that's what we're here for, we'll respond.
Chief, can you get, can you get us a report of any of the calls that you have had to that building, and what they are, for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To, I want to address the residents that are having this issue with the noise, and anytime that you have an issue with noise, that's a nuisance, you need to call the police. You need to call the police and advise them that there is noise and there's nuisance, they write a report. That morning, that report is given to our code enforcement officer. If that does not happen, then the code enforcement officer does not know, and he's not going to be able to act on it. So by all means, do call the police, and, and, you know, they know what to do, they will write their report, and then that morning, Martin, our code enforcement officer, will obtain it, and then, you know, I'm not sure in this case, who, you know, who it is that he will cite, you know, if it's the building, the management, the owners of the building.
Mr. Bennett, can you speak to that, please?
Someone, it needs to be responsible.
Can you speak to Commissioner Vlantis's question?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It depends on what, who the complaint is against. If it's against the happening on the property, then it would be the building owner. In this case, it's still Celeste Alameda, it's still owned by H. Flight Development, so it would be them.
So do call the police, and, 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 you know, have them make the report.
You have, you have to come to the podium, please. And we'll translate.
All right, good night.
Name and address.
My name is Iraam Figueroa, I had two properties in the neighborhood.
Iraam Figueroa, I think, okay, so you can-
I had two properties in the neighborhood, 6326 Southwest Nastree, and the duplex in the, in the 64, and 647 in the Nastree. So my English is very bad.
It's okay.
I live in here for 19 and 20 years. My daughter, my son, is living here for a long time. Everybody here is the same problem, the same problem. The police is great job, great, great job. I called the police, I don't know how many times, how many times, 10, 11, 2:00 in the morning, the police coming, every fast. Chief, great job. I put in front of my home, the motorcycle. It's only the solution for entering my home, my truck. I have big truck, it's for my job, it's my truck. I don't know, I don't know how many times, big problem for everybody here. The solution, put the motorcycle. It's a good idea, all commissioning, walking the Nastree. For me, it's more better, you know, I'm sorry for my English.
It's fine, we understand, you're doing fine.
I'm sorry for my, but the same for me. I put in your hand, your hand, your hand, your hand, your hand, the problem. I don't know what is the solution, but you is, for me, you is the best. Only need walking, together.
Yes.
The problem is there, not here. The police is great job, great job, the problem is not the police. The problem is in the street, but I need walking, walking for the Nastree. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief?
Yeah, Mr. Hernandez, I think Mr. Hernandez wants to speak. Yes.
Yes, just to tell you, my neighbor, she lives alone, and she had to call me twice to see if I could move the car, back up the car, because she was not able to do that. So there is a problem here. I just want you guys to know, there is a big problem here. I think the solution of giving the single family a sticker or something to put outside, so when my son or my daughter comes in, she puts it on, and she has a place to park, I think that would be the perfect solution. And like the officer said, the captain here says, he's doing a great job there, because I have called-
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for recognizing our police officers, they do a great job. Chief?
Chief?
Okay, let, let- Chief speak, and then Commissioner Suarez, and then Commissioner Vlantis. Go ahead, Chief. No, oh.
Oh, I have a question for the chief.
Frank, Mr. Hernandez, come back.
Please turn your mic on, Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner microphone. I'm sorry. I know Frank since 1968.
Don't mention it.
About 50 years. And I know his family, I know his house. Now, what you said, Frank, is that they park in front of the driveway, they block the driveway?
It's not in front of the parkway, but they give you no space to back up the car, to maneuver going out. So this lady calls me and Frank, and you, and sometimes for me, it's hard, and I am a good driver, so it's just to back up, you got one car here, you got- So it's just to back up, you got one car here, you go, you got one car there, then you got one car in back of you. So there's no way to back up sixteen feet back or twelve feet back, there's no way, the way it is, because it's very crowded. Everybody goes to that sidewalk, especially on my house sidewalk. Every, it's, it's like a Disney World parking lot there, really. That's the way it is.
Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome, sir. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Hello to your wife and family.
Chief, chief, our officers, is it a directive that they have that they need to write a report every time they get a call for a noise nuisance?
Sir, when, when a call comes in, it automatically goes into the CAD system. Whether it ends up needing a report or not, it's up to the officer when he gets on the scene if a crime is committed. If a crime is not committed, no report is made. However, if it's a violation of a code enforcement issue.
That's it.
We write a code enforcement report that we send over to code enforcement in the morning or in, during the day. Whenever it occurs, it gets forwarded to the code enforcement officer, which is Martin Garcia or Mr. Penna.
That's, that's what I meant.
Who's the chief code enforcement officer.
So that does happen every time?
Every single time.
Okay.
So Chief, I guess I should ask for two reports then. The reports, if a report is written, but can I get a, can we get a report if a call came in from the CAD system?
I'll have that up.
Perfect.
You know, that was one of the questions I wanted to ask. How far back do you want to go, for a month, two months?
Uh, no, let's go back six months, can we?
Six months.
Is that too much? I mean, I'm, you tell me, I don't know, what?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna bring it to you.
What do I need?
I mean, the problem exists.
Let's go six months, let's go six months.
I can tell you that the problem exists, I can tell you that we do get the calls. So that report, the only thing it's gonna tell you is, yeah, it's happening.
I want to see how many calls.
They're, they're not lying. I mean, it's occurring. And the guys go and respond and do what they can. And, and, and I want to mention something else because this isn't the only area that we have a problem, so I'm not gonna get into all the problems that we have in the city. But we have to handle it, and I think Commissioner Blanis will understand it the best when I say, police department has to triage also.
No, I, I, that's why, that's my concern, all these calls that are coming in, and, you know, we only, we only have so many offers on, on the street.
Well, we, we respond immediately, barring we don't have something more serious going on. If we got something more serious going on, unfortunately, the blocked drive is gonna have to be. But in any event, waiting in this city is maybe four minutes because usually the response time is less than two minutes. And I'll compare that to any city in this county.
No, the, the residents have spoken very highly, and you know, you know how we feel about your department, so that goes without, without saying. You guys are doing a fantastic job, but we just have to see what we can work together and.
I, I have a question for Mr. Penna.
Yes, a, as, as well as I. I have a question for you, Mr. Penna.
Mr. Penna, all these reports, noise nuisance reports that are being passed on from the police department to the code enforcement department, what are we doing? Because it, it, it sounds to me at this point that we need to put some heat on that management. And, you know, the only way that this management is gonna do something is if they, their pocketbook gets, gets hit.
We have met with the management and we have.
No, no, I'm talking about citing them and finding them.
Well, you let, you have to let me finish.
Okay.
We have met with the management and we have cited the property.
Okay.
So once they correct it, then the issue is closed, but.
So, so right now, they're under violation and?
I would have to check with Martin, but I'm sure they're under violation for something.
Okay.
This was, when Mr. Smart sent his email, Martin made contact with the management company again.
You know, because it, it sounds to me, you know, if, if they get, you know, if they get ten, ten noise nuisance reports in one day, that's ten different violations, right?
Correct.
Okay. And each violation is what, it's?
Depends on the, on the violation.
Okay, so you know what? They, they need to get written up time and time and time again until they realize that they're gonna have to do something about it. And then, you know, they, they'll change their regulations, you know, we need to find a way where, I mean, I don't know if legally we can't really do it, but, I mean, there's gotta be a way where, you know, they're gonna, they'll find themselves having to do something, you know, changing their, 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 their business model. For instance, you know, now they charge fifty dollars, you know, for an extra car. Well, well, you know what? Maybe they're having so much problems and they're paying so many fines that, you know what, they'll say, you know what, let's, let's, let's make things better. You know what? You, you can park your, your car for free, your second car. And, and that will alleviate, you know, some, some of the issue that we have. But, you know, we, we, we gotta put the heat on them. I mean, the way that I see it, it's, you know, I know that it's a system and it, and it kinda works slow, but, you know, we, we need, we need to apply that system to them, that process.
We will.
Mr. Penna, I think, and I, I have a pretty much, not a similar question, but I was gonna ask you about when someone said that there's a fifty dollar fee for extra cars. I know we can't tell a business how to run their business, that's them running their business, but is there anything in the special use permit that speaks to that? Do we have any leverage as far as a special use permit is to kind of have something to say about that?
We, we have to go back and talk to management and see what is the capacity and are they at capacity, is what we need to do.
Right, so, I mean, that, that's the angle I want you to look at as far as your special use permit. Like I said, we can't tell them what to do about the fifty dollars, that's, that's their business, but how did that fit into?
Correct.
The special use? So if you could get back to us on that. And another thing, the street sweeping. These residents have every right to deserve to have their street swept, like we all do. I don't have a solution, but what are your thoughts on that? I mean, if there's always a car parked there, these poor people, you know, they're not getting the service that, that we, that they deserve, that we, that we provide to the rest of the city.
Well, I, the only thing I could suggest is first doing a survey during the day to see what cars are parked there all day. Because I'm pretty sure it's not all from a, Celeste Alameda's building. There are businesses on Eighth Street that they don't have enough parking and they come and they park on Ninth Street, especially employees and stuff like that. So we would have to run each car to see where they're coming from and where, where they actually belong to.
Can we do that? Would?
Yeah.
Okay, would you look into that for us then?
Correct.
That's a good start.
Because we may be contributing to that too.
That's a good start. Thank you for.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
It sounds like, you know, we, we, we need to, to focus and we need to arrange orderly, you know, this, this prong attack to, to this issue. So, you know, we mentioned about, you know, the research with the attorney, mentioned the, the reports and the code enforcement, now you mentioned something else. Maybe, I don't know, maybe, you know, you can lead some kind of focus group with maybe some of the residents and, 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 and attack this issue, you know, with, with, with a different prong attack, you know, addressing, you know, each, each and every one of them. That, that way, you know, we, we have a plan of attack, we have a plan of action. You know, because we can, we can talk here, you know, all night and then, you know, delude what we're, we're saying, it can be forget, it can be forgotten, but maybe, you know, I, I don't know if we should form a committee, but, but have like a list of all the things that we are, you know, acting upon and, and, and following up on and, and hopefully maybe legislating or enacting a new ordinance or, or, or whatever. But be organized, be, you know, start the plan of action and, and, in other words, you know, we, you know, we, we, we plan, we organize, you know, we staff, we direct.
I like, I like that and.
And we control.
And absolutely, I, I, I will, I will head that.
Okay, great.
That, that, let's call it a, a, a plan of action.
Yeah.
I will see to it that we have a plan of action in place and that we follow it and obviously continue to work on, on everything we need to work on. And Chief, you said that our, our, our NRO has gone to speak to the man, to the, to the management company?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, but Penna, did you say, when you said we've gone to speak, did you mean our NRO or have?
No.
We gone as far as public services as well? Have we gone? So Martin has gone, which is, Martin Garcia is our public services, I mean, our code compliance officer. And our neighborhood resource officer has also gone, so we've had two people, and they've talked about pretty much the same things, right?
My NRO was actually a witness to them putting out the blast that they put out, advising them not to be littering, not to be, when they're walking the dogs, pick up the poop.
And when was that, Chief?
Uh, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, all right.
Madam Mayor, if I may offer.
Yes, yes, I know you wanted to speak.
We had a very, I think what, what I would call a very meaningful conversation with the Waterton Group on the Sixty-seventh Avenue project. As you know, I, I became involved in that conversation.
This is a different management company.
I know that, but I'm saying we had and we have seen results on Sixty-seventh Avenue. But I know that that, not because I was involved, I think they saw on the part of the city an expressed interest in that they had to control the situation because it was adversely affecting the budding neighbors who live in residential homes. So I think the situation as well, you know, has improved over there because I believe that they were involved with some evictions and now things are starting to move along, not that that is gonna be the case here. I think that the main focus here is parking, the poop, the discourtesy and the littering around the property. And obviously, there, there are nuisance calls, there are noise calls, and we need to bring management, this to the attention of management, and I think we need to make that call sort of like immediately. As soon as the chief has the numbers, I wouldn't wait till the next commission meeting. I think that we should make that call.
Oh, I agree.
And, and start to work on a, a plan of attack before your next meeting so that the neighbors know where they stand and what the expectations are.
No, yes, I'm, I'm hoping for an, some, an immediate plan of action. When I said about the report, to give it just the next meeting, but the chief can always, you know, send it through you, you can send it to us, we can have that before the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I want to definitely get a plan of action in, like, immediately, yes. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So let me just get a lot of thoughts out that I was writing down here, addressing something the manager said and something that some of the residents brought up. Number one, you know, it's, this is, the situation's unfortunate, but you're actually not alone. There's, the other quarters are suffering a lot of the same problems, especially with, I'm saying the quarters, I'm saying the people behind the buildings on Sixty-seventh Avenue, the people around the buildings on Fifty-seventh Avenue have a lot of the same problems. Your problem is worse, and I, I drive by it every day, and the, one of the biggest reasons why it's worse is because it can't be mitigated. There's the same parking problems in Fifty-seventh and Sixty-seventh, I promise you. The difference is on Fifty-seventh Avenue, management used to tell people, go park in Inter-American Bank, go park in Wells Fargo. And I, I know they've, they told me. So they, what happened there is Inter-American started towing, Wells Fargo gave up. That's why you see the Wells Fargo lot every day is, is packed, they're not throwing parties in there, it's just the excess parking. The, on, on Sixty-seventh Avenue, they have a lot of the same problems that you guys have parking in the neighborhood. The difference is, the neighborhood is a lot bigger. You guys have one street that, that's at the, in the back there. So that's the only place they're, they are, you know, they're gonna park. Frankly, it's, it's a density issue. They, there's, there's, I mean, everybody knows here, it's no secret that I was, I was against the buildings. You know, it's, it's, and it's, it was because of the, the personal experience that I had with the developers and with the, the previous building. One thing that I want to make sure of is that they're utilizing all their parking spaces. And what I mean by that, not only for their units, but for the visitor parking that they committed to in their special use application. I, I, I want to make sure, if, if, if we as a city can inspect that that's actually being used, because I don't know if it's the actual people parking there, who live there, or if a lot of it is visitors. I mean, these people, I mean, there's a lot of units in there, they have visitors naturally, and because of that, they allocate a certain amount of the parking for visitor parking. But my, you know, my, I don't know how they, how a visitor would get into a lot considering you need a key to get into the garage. So I don't know if that's being actually utilized as it was expected in the special use permit. The other thing I wanted to bring up was security. I know that the manager, you said that you had discussion with Waterton. On Sixty-seventh Avenue, it's no secret, it's been publicly discussed here, we have, we had a big problem with police calls and a lot of calls to police. The neighbors had, had problems too, I talk to them all the time, of activity around the buildings. It was, it became a big problem. I wouldn't say that there, the, the building has done much to take down the, the crime. I know our police has done a lot to take down the crime. What really took down the activity there was the fact that we have police responding all the time, the level of detail that the chief put together. The chief knows that I have a philosophical disagreement with him on, on the, the, the use of our police inside the buildings. And, you know, I, I, I still maintain that we need to put a lot more pressure on those buildings as well as the Eighth Street building, which I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying if it's, the way I view it, it's gonna get, it's going to get worse before, unless something happens. It's gonna get worse when something else happens, because it's not a full occupancy, as you guys know. We need to get way ahead of this problem before it turns into something that was happening at Sixty-seventh or worse. We need to put a lot of pressure on this building, especially as they are still owned by the people we dealt with, that, well, not we, I was on the commission at the time, but the city dealt with when these buildings went up. Because these buildings need security. I mean, they, they, they need to have somebody controlling their property and for the, the protection of their own residents, but also for the protection of the surrounding community. So it can't be that our, that our police has to be sitting around waiting for, you know, something to happen there. They need to have security, they need to take responsibility for their building and the residents of their building. The poop problem, again, seen everywhere around the city, you know, really prevalent around the buildings. Most of them have dogs, most people in the buildings have dogs, and they, they do show a lack of respect for the, for the, for the community when, when they take their dogs to the bathroom. On Sixty-seventh, most people have, do not, do not, do not let your dog poop your signs, and you'll see right next to the sign, there'd be a, a bag, they'll even bag it and they'll leave it there. I, I've seen it. That's something that is a citywide problem. That's something that I do think has a solution. We need to find that solution very quickly. I know I've been talking to the manager for a while about this. I don't know if it's putting more of those dog poop things, I don't know if it's getting a stronger ordinance, I don't know if it's having somebody go around. I know you guys, I, I, I was, I was told this, and I know you guys were probably told this, if you had any interaction with developers prior to that building going up, that they were gonna have DNA testing on the, on the poop of the dogs, right? I, I, I don't know, did anyone, did anyone hear that? I, I, I know, I know Mr. Smart heard it, I, I heard it when I was, when I, I'm sorry? It was said. I don't know if it was said in, in the meeting or not. I know it was said to residents and, and to people moving into the building, but it was, I don't know if it was said in the meeting. Unfortunately, I can't find it on the special use permit, because I did review it this morning. I can't find that as a requirement, so that's very unfortunate that we didn't condition it. But there is, I think there is a solution with that problem, which is the most minor of them, safety and, and the parking being the biggest ones. I, you know, the Uber Eats situation, I know this is very specific to you, for, for you and, sorry, sorry, for you. Yeah, that I'd like to see if we, when we talk to management, that, they has names, I mean, they come with names of people, that's how Uber works? Right. That's something that, that man, I'm sorry.
It has to be in the podium, it cannot be a conversation.
That's fine, he's not talking. The, 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 they have, they have names that accompany these Uber Eats. The, the, they have, they have names that accompany these Uber Eats, not all of them will be in the building, most of them will be, that they need to take responsibility for the residents. If somebody is putting, and I don't know how we're gonna enforce this, but we're going to find the teeth to enforce it, if somebody is putting somebody else's address from the building just to circumvent their entrance situation, the building needs to take action against that resident of their building. Obviously, we can't take action against the person, but the building can take private action against their own tenant, and we need to be able to hold the building accountable for that, that they aren't doing that and they are enforcing that. We need to put a lot of pressure on these buildings.
Mr. Penna, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I'll finish up, last thing, I will be talking to the attorney after this meeting to see how we kick off changing some ordinances in 282, because frankly, the 2014 ordinance that created the live-work unit was a complete farce. There's live-work units in all these buildings that allowed them, under that ordinance, to have 30% more density. So, I'll give you an example, in the building in, on 57th Avenue, that building was approved in 2005 originally, with 140 units. Because of this live-work unit ordinance that was passed in 2014, which none of them actually work out of these live-work units, they're apartments, they were able to add from 140 to 194 units without changing the parking. Actually, I think it had less parking than the original building. So, that ordinance needs to get, I mean, go away, and the parking requirements need to be beefed up big time, but that, I'll be talking to the attorney after to see how we expedite that.
I wanna-
Mr. Penna, could you speak to that, please, sir? I'd like a little more information on what the vice mayor just said.
Which?
On the live-work units-
On the live-work units.
What was approved down 57th Avenue.
The live-work units.
The ordinance was drafted and it was passed, and it entitled the developer to use the area that was gonna be used for commercial retail to turn that into units if he wished.
So, in essence, it gave the developer the ability to have 30% more floor area ratio, which led to more density. And I just gave you the example of the 57th building, where, and in these special use permit locations, in his memos, you'll read it, it says the maximum residence is allowed, and then it'll say the max, maximum plus these commercial or office live-work units, and it will be an additional 50, additional, you know, in one case, and I think the first 67th building, it was additional 110 units, and it creates a lot more density that frankly, it's a farce, because these live-work units, I don't know if you've ever seen them, they're on the ground floor on the 57th building, they're, they're not, they're not offices, they're not retail, they're apartments with weird doors, and it just allowed them to get a lot more density.
That was by ordinance, Mr. Penna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor- Mr. Attorney, I'd like you to work with Mr. Penna on this ordinance, I'd like a little more, bit more information on the ordinance that the vice mayor is referring to, if you could get with Mr. Penna and then get back to us on that.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Okay, let's, let's let Mr. Penna finish.
At that time, the county and everyone else was pushing the live-work units in residential buildings, because they wanted to keep people off the roads and work out of your home if you could, okay? That's how it came about. It's not something that the developer thought of or anything else, it was something that was pushed on us by the county, and we looked at the smallest possible way of allowing it, and in fact, the live-work unit occupations are very, very small and restrictive to us mom-and-pop type businesses. It's not allowed to have a cafeteria, you're not allowed to do all kinds of other type of businesses out of there, it's either a lawyer working at his house, an architect working at his house, whether, whether people are actually doing it, which yet to be seen.
I guess I'm really not, I guess I'm really not clear on how that has anything to do with the problems at hand, that's the part I'm not clear about.
Well, the vice mayor's saying it gave more density to the building, but at the same time, it removed commercial density from the building, because you no longer had commercial space that you were going to have a business running out of the bottom of the building.
Where you'd have more cars coming to.
During the daytime.
Basically.
But they don't sleep there, you don't sleep at an office.
I'm just trying to see how that played into the problems we have here. I wanted to understand more how that, what that had to do with the situation at hand. I believe, Elliot, one moment. Commissioner, go ahead.
You know, typically, you know, if you wanna have a pet, the management will charge you more money to have a pet.
That depends on the-
Typically, typically, they charge you more money. You know, you want a pet, you pay more money, you want a-
Mr. Asbell, Mr. Asbell.
You wanna pay, you wanna have an extra car, you pay an extra 50 bucks. The language of this management company is dollars, money. So, I think that what we need to do is what the vice mayor alluded to, we need to put pressure on them, because if they see themselves having to pay fines, and all of a sudden, you know, their, their, their bottom, bottom line is affected, you know, their business model will change, they will do something, and they will say, hey, we're not making money here, we're losing money. So, you know, now that puts us in a position of strength, they're gonna wanna talk to us, they're gonna wanna meet with us, because right now, you know, we're asking them, hey, talk to us, meet with us, we have this problem. So, if we put ourselves in a position of strength by, by, you know, applying the process as stringent as it can be to them, then they're gonna be in a position where they're gonna say, okay, alright, we wanna work with you, we wanna do something, and you know what? That would be not the time to let up. Let them change your business model.
To that point, can I ask a quick question? Has anyone in administration spoken to, I won't say their name, but the two developers that have, that were the developers of this building and the building 67th and the building 57th, has anyone, has anyone talked to them about these issues recently?
The one on 67th?
No, 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 I'm not talking about the Waterton, I'm talking about these developers that developed, that still own that building, and they developed all the other buildings, they still own that one. Has anyone from the administration spoken to-
Not my office.
Them recently about these issues?
Yes.
Mr. Penna said he did already.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said you spoke to them recently about these issues?
The management company and-
Right, I'm not talking about the owners.
And Tony Castro, yes.
And Tony Castro, what was Tony Castro's response?
He was gonna look into it with management.
Alright, so here's what, here's where, here's where I'm gonna, where we're gonna go with this. We listened and we've heard every single word that you, that you all have said. I've also heard from, from the chief, from Public Works, that we're already working on this, our officer was there two weeks ago, so we've asked for some, some information back from staff. I need to give them time now to come to me with, you know, we've offered some solutions, but now I need to give, you know, the staff, the administration, Public Works, the police, to come back to, to come back to us with something that they think may help, even though, you know, we, we all kind of already know what we can't do, but I'm sure, there's probably things that we can do. So, now I need to give them time to tell us that. So, not only, not only did we listen to you, but I know they did too, they heard you, as we did. So, a couple of, a couple of ways we can go, and I told Mr., I told Commissioner Blanis that I would, I would head this. Do you want us, do you want them to come back? They're gonna start working on this immediately, I know, they're gonna, they're gonna be on it tomorrow. Do you want us to bring all the information back to the next meeting and you come back to the next meeting, or would you weather us perhaps communicate with, you pick up a lead person, and we'll communicate with that person via email, and that person can, can, can tell you all? How do you, how do you want us to get back to you with what we're doing and what, you know, what we think we can do? How do you want us to get back to you? You wanna come back to the next meeting? Go ahead.
I wanna come back here.
You wanna come back to the next meeting?
Yes.
I think you need to have another open forum, just like we have tonight.
This is the, this would be the meeting, or, do you wanna do like a workshop, I mean, so let's, let's work, let's work the next meeting, let's, you, you, do you feel comfortable with that, coming back to the next meeting, and we'll bring all our findings to you at that time? Is that, show of hands, is everyone okay with that? Okay, the majority.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As the conversation was developing, I have been following Commissioner Blanis's instructions, and I have been doing already some research, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Now, but I need something from the record, I need to ask the chief a question, you also assist me. You have a violation, a traffic violation booklet, is that correct, where you write your tickets? Ticket book, or where you read the statutes? No, no, where, the book that you write the ticket on. Yes, they're done on computers now, but yeah. And it has a box that says violation of statute or what? Statute. Statute. Do you have a box that says violation of local ordinance? Yes. Okay. It was day-county ordinances is the ones we're allowed to write. The day-county ordinances? Correct. Do you have one that says municipal ordinance? No. Okay, well, we'll talk about that later, thank you, sir.
I like the way that's going.
Typically-
Okay, one at a time, go ahead, you're next, sir, you're next.
If I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, but typically, if Miami-Dade County has a, an ordinance, let's say restricting something, the only way that we can, can address that same ordinance is if we make it stricter, right?
That would be a matter of research, Mr. Commissioner, I don't want to assert-
Okay, we're gonna-
Something-
I'm gonna jump in, I'm gonna jump in here, I'm gonna jump in here. We have a plan of action that, that the chief, Mr. Penna, Mr. Attorney, Madam Manager, Madam Clerk, 'cause I know you're taking all the notes, so you, you know what you've gotta look into, we all know that, so you got, you know, you have the next two weeks to come back to us for the next meeting. Madam Clerk, please put this, please put this on the agenda as a follow-up, an agenda item, I don't wanna do it under public comments, just do it under an agenda item, and we'll come back and let the residents know where we are, if, you know, we need more time to find out more things, but we'll at least be able to provide the residents some information as to what we see, what we can do.
Madam Mayor, you'll get a report from our office with input from all the department directors-
Exactly, that's perfect.
And addressing each one of the categories that was discussed here, nuisance, parking, poop, food delivery, I mean, everything, egress and ingress-
But I do want this, I do want this as an agenda item for the next meeting. So, ladies and gentlemen, it is an agenda item, it's been set as an agenda item for the next meeting, which is May 19-
May 19.
At 7:30. You are all welcome back. Mr. Asbell, if it's, if it's gonna be short, okay, very quick.
Mayor, I want to-
And then you're next, yes, yes, sir.
I want to say you, all of you-
Wait, wait, let Elliot speak, I invited-
No, no, I defer to the commissioner, I defer to the commissioner.
Oh, go ahead, sir, go ahead, yo.
No, you give him the word.
I didn't, no, he was deferring to you, he deferred to you, go ahead, Commissioner Suarez.
Number one, and it's simple, and it will help the police impart as how you move forward, help the chief, the various-
To us, Elliot.
God help, the various residents-
Chief, hold his hands on the podium, would you?
The various residents, it would be helpful that as you have difficulty-
Lower your, you're gonna lower your mask, Elliot, lower your mask, so I can hear you.
As you have difficulty exiting or entering, and this is just the one issue.
You said you're gonna make this quick, don't forget.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That it would be helpful if before you call the police, you jot down the license plate numbers of the vehicles in question, that will give the chief and his department a leg up in terms of, are they visitors in the apartment houses, have they have nothing to do with the, whose cars are they? So, you can establish what Commissioner Blanis is talking about, a laser focus, and it would help expedite moving forward. And it's not asking a lot, they're gonna call the police anyhow, by your advice, I'm saying they come out, oh my God, I can't move my car, jot down the, the license plate number, call the police department, give the lights department, you're through, and let the authorities work. The last thing I wanted to address, and I'm sure after counselor investigates it, Commissioner Blanis, you're incorrect usually-
Elliot, make it quick.
As relates to strictness, as relates to the state and preemption. As a matter of fact, just recently, if you're reading the papers, the governor of our state is looking to undermine all home rule and take state control and take away municipalities of all sizes.
Unfortunately, we go through that every legislative session. Thank you, Elliot, I know, I know, thank you, thank you, Elliot, and thank you for making it short, you did, you kept your word. Commissioner Suarez?
I just want to let you know this, you have been here for 50 years, many of you, Fran, you have been for 40, I've been for 30, most of us have been for many years. Your problem is our problem, because we are a big family. So, you may be sure that the commission is going to work very hard for your problem. I remember a couple of years ago, Commissioner Blanis was doing the same problem, something similar, and he had some ideas about some stickers or something, and then Mr. Smart brought about the same, more or less something about that. But anyway, you, you may go home now thinking that we are, because I was not aware of the big problem you have, Fran, you never told me, we, I never, and I, but anyway, we know now your problem, and this commission will work very hard and will tell you, will tell these builders about the problem they have, and like Uber, I imagine that Uber, this building have to have an address, and I think they have to deliver it to the address.
They do, sir, they're giving, they're giving Mr. Farhardo, Commissioner, they're giving Mr. Farhardo's address, that's the problem.
A conversation, because we are finishing now.
I'm saying, I'm saying-
I just want to tell you that we are going to take care of everything, that's what I want to let you know, we are going to take care of everything, and I tell you, we are going to work very hard for this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Farhardo, we know, they're giving your address, I know, we're, 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 we'll look into that, and I, I am so sorry that I, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry for everything that you're going through, but we are, we're on it, and please return next Friday, next Wednesday at 7:30.
No, next Wednesday.
I'm sorry, the 19th at 7:30, and we will continue this conversation.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I forget the reason why the sticker program was not implemented, but if you can please add that to the list and look into that-
Add that to the list, Madam Clerk, Madam Manager.
I don't remember, but that's, that's something that we can-
The stickers for the cars-
Yeah, for residential parking.
Right, so yeah, we're going to look at every solution that was brought up, and perhaps some solutions that, that, that managed staff will come up with, we're gonna, we're, we're not saying that there isn't anything we can do, we are going to look into it and see what we can do. Okay? Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear her.
Go.
Primarily for the peace and quiet for, for us, the residents of the city.
Claro, senor. Thank you all for coming, you're welcome to stay, but, you're welcome to leave, whatever. Thank you all for taking your time and coming and letting us know your thoughts and your concerns, and our doors, our doors are always open, always.
Thank you.
And my cell num, my cell number is on our website, so you, feel free to call me at any time. Yes, sir.
On the, sir?
This was my first time.
Name and address, please.
Name and address, Rafael H. Figueras, 6278 Southwest La Calle Nueva, si nunca participé.
If you can speak English, we don't have that translation.
Either way. Yo parlo francés así.
No, 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 I'm a translator for that.
Ah, sí bien, madame. In English. If I was never here before, it's because this is a great city, very well managed and run, from the police, from the code enforcement, Mr. Penna, to you, and I don't want to avoid mention, I mean, all of you commissioners, reason why I was never here before, I was very satisfied. This is my first time, because I'm not dissatisfied with your performance, but-
Understood. Completely understood.
It's something new that has to be stopped, and I thank you for your time and your courtesy for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Commissioner Blanca needs a five-minute break?
No, it's fine. She needs to go to the bathroom.
Five minutes?
No, I don't need to go to the bathroom.
Do you need a break, Commissioner, no?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes or no?
No.
Okay, no, never mind, we don't need a break.
You don't need a break?
Okay, next item, next item, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, can I make a request, a recommendation? We have an agenda item, items 11A and B, this is a mitigation request-
Yes, yes, they've been waiting very patiently, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Can we take it out of order?
We can take it right now, thank you for that. I was actually going to say that, and I forgot.
Can I read the items?
Absolutely.
Yes, item 11, under new business agenda, item is item 11A, this is a request for mitigation-
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, gentlemen, Mr. Smart, Mr. Attorney, Chief, if you don't mind. Thank you, it's, it's mitigation, sir, we need your attention.
I'm sorry?
We're proceeding with 11A and B at this time. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
This item, 11A, request for mitigation of liens or court violations of the property located at 5771 Southwest 11th Street, West Miami, Florida, 3144, and owners Carlos and Anna Piñero.
Mr. Penna?
Good evening.
Again, Mayor, Commissioner, Vice Mayor. The property of 5771 Southwest 11th Street was cited for an easement violation. Unfortunately, the notice went to the property and not to where the owner resided at the time. So it accumulated fines over a period of time. It was cleared eventually, and they are here tonight to mitigate the fine.
Okay. Please. Name and address again, for the record.
No problem. So, Carlo Lorenzo. And my address that we're referring to is the 5771 Southwest 11th Street. And I currently live in 5810 Southwest 10th Street. Thank you for the opportunity in letting us come tonight, obviously. We were unaware of this. My brother and I are the property owner currently of that house. We were completely unaware that the house even had a lien in place until it was closing time, because we recently put it for sale. And that's when we were notified that we had a lien on the property. At that point, we came to the city. He was super helpful in assisting us to try to even figure out what the purpose and the reasoning behind the lien was. Then subsequently, it was something that ended up happening in 2011, which was resolved, apparently, because we, I mean, there's no violation in the property. We, I lived at the property at the time, actually. So that's when we were first notified that there was a lien in place for the home.
Did you say 2011?
Yes. 2011. That's a long ago. And, I mean, we were completely unaware. It was the title company that notified us that we had a lien in place. And the lien was apparently served September 2012 to the property, which at that point, I had already moved to my new home, which is in 5810. And if something was served to the property, it was to the tenants back then. And we were never, I was unaware.
In 2011?
Yes.
Mr. Pena, and since the fines have been accumulating since then?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm looking at the package here. Am I correct in seeing the last notice that was sent was September 12 of 2012?
That's correct. That's when the lien was placed. It went to the board. By the time it went to the board, the fines were whatever the amount is. And then at that time, in that last hearing, the board motioned to lien the property, since there was no response from the property. Again, the notices were going to the property. The property owner lives at a different address. So whatever the tenant was doing with the notice, it had proper service. Unfortunately, they were not aware of it, but it did occur.
And this is all for utility easement? And that was taken care of back in 2012?
Yes. After.
After the notice, right.
That's correct.
Yes.
Actually, when I lived at the property and I was notified of that,
Come closer to the microphone.
We resolved the issue right away. So in 2012, there was no violation in the property at all. Back then, I do know that, I'm not sure his name.
Charlie.
Charlie, it was a person back then. He came to the property. I was living there at the time. It was completely resolved. I mean, it was just an overgrown hedge, apparently. And that was taken care of right away. It was not, I guess, maybe, and I'm not alleging anything, by no means, but maybe he forgot to close out the case. And obviously, it just elongated and got to this extent. But it was definitely not a violation in 2012. And we were never made aware. And what I find it odd, obviously, you know, the city is not the biggest city, but there are a lot of residents that reside here. In total, we own about nine properties in the city. We're very well-known here. Everybody, my dad calls the city, and they know him by voice. And I just find it very odd that in no communication or no single conversation were we even aware of this lien that was being served on our property. And also, from a legal standpoint, my understanding is, and I spoke to our attorney, we had the property, was any notices to that property should be going to 5800 Southwest 10th Street, which is where my father lives. But I'm not sure why it was served then to 5771, where a tenant was living at the time.
When did you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
When did, so when, you said you cleared it in 2012, the violation. How were you informed that there was a problem?
In 2011. When this occurred in 2011, actually referring back to the date, I even went on to my Google Drive with pictures. October 7 of 2011, I was in Disney World with my daughter. She was born in April of that year. And it was our family trip, and we were there. And if we recall correctly, Charlie called my father and told him about it. The moment we got back, we resolved it right away. He said, "No problem, Carlos, everything's taken care of." And we never heard anything again.
So as far as you knew, it was Charlie cleared it, and it was a done deal?
And we never heard a single thing again. I then ended up buying the property on 10th Street. And we come to find out about this lien now, when it's time to close on the property. And my understanding, I'm not sure if it was with, I'm not sure with who in the city. The title company had a conversation, and it's somewhere around $29,000 that we currently have.
Okay. Mr. Pena, anything else?
Again, the notices for code enforcement is governed by Florida statute. They must go to the property address on the tax rolls. That's where they went. Whether the property owner lives on 58th and 10th, we can't take that notice over there. If he wants us to take that notice over there, he has to go to the tax appraiser and say, "Send all my notices from this property to my address." Okay? So we follow the law. When the violation occurs, yes, you may have taken some time to have cleared the violation, but that amount of money that accumulated during that violation stays active and eventually goes to the code enforcement board for you to come and mitigate with the board. Again, there were opportunities and notices sent regarding the notice of hearing and regarding the time that it appeared on the code enforcement board's docket. If you didn't attend because you didn't pick up the notice, again, the city must proceed with what's required by the code and what's required by state statute when citing a property. We have done that in this case. So just because Miami-Dade Tax Appraiser has 5771 as the property mailing address, the city, just because they know that Mr. Piñero lives on 10th Street, cannot grab that notice and take it to him. Okay?
I got it. My concern here is that if the resident was told, they were made aware of the situation, they fixed it, and they were told it was clear. And for some reason, I don't know, it wasn't cleared. That's my only concern here, yes.
And just to voice, obviously, I was born and raised in the city. I'm not confrontational. I've never even attended these meetings. I must disagree with you, and I'm very sorry to do so, very politely.
Remember to address us, address us online.
Because simply the fact that a couple of years after, we even did a brand-new roof on the property. And we have the records to show that what was recorded was to go to 5800. Recently, when the house was transferred to my name and my brother's name, which is here present as well, that's when the property address changed. But before that, the record and any notifications to that property should have been going to the property owner, which is 5800 Southwest 10th Street, not 5771. I mean, I'm not here to have any confrontation. I just want to mitigate this. I would like to resolve this issue. I've been a happy resident my whole entire life in the city. I plan to continue living here, as I own other properties. So I just want to come to a solution to this problem.
I understand. I think your brother, did you have your hand up? Did you want to say something? Oh, I thought, oh, okay.
I talk all the time.
Okay, thank you. Elliot, Elliot. Elliot, no, no.
Sorry.
Not a public hearing, Elliot. Thank you, sir. Madam Manager, did you have anything to add to this?
We've looked at the file, Juan and I, and I think unfortunately, what occurred was we were following the statute on serving code enforcement and serving the property, which is the proper way to serve the property. We mailed U.S. mail, and we certified mail. We have confirmation that the letter was never, it was never claimed at the post office, because at the time, the house was rented. And I guess your tenants never really followed up with it and didn't give you the notice. We have time on the file, like we do in every code enforcement situation.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is, in order to recover the file, that we reduce the fine to $1,500. Of course, this is a recommendation from staff. I've discussed it with Mr. Pena. And that's what we recommend that you proceed with.
Any other questions from the table? Mr. Blanis?
This is a non-structural violation.
Correct.
This was not any type of legal construction. This was not anything that was going to cause any hazard to the community. This was just a hedge.
Right.
And it was resolved right away. So, you know, I realize that we do have an expense involved in keeping track of this file. But, you know, with what's been said here, you know, I think that the recommendation is excessive. You know, I think, I think that, you know, it'd be more in terms of, you know, hopefully covering our cost of doing all the certified mailings and following up with the file, maybe in terms of $500 versus $1,500. You know, that way, we recover some of that expense and we give relief, you know, to the resident, since, you know, they did take care of the issue many, many years ago. And, you know, and the process, it was never cleared, and the process just kept going. And, you know, I may add, this process that we have is very, very important. It is what makes our city, you know, run. And it's a law, and, you know, it's a process that we must follow. That's why you are here.
And I totally appreciate, you know, your feedback and your comments. And I agree, all code enforcements and every violation should be enforced. By no means I want to deviate from that. But obviously, if we would have been made aware of anything, I would have, you know, rectified the issue immediately. I mean, in all of our properties, we maintain all of our homes. Grass is always well-cut, well-painted, houses.
I do have a question on that note, if you would, one moment. Mr. Pena, because Mr. Lorenzo mentioned she has many other properties. Have we ever had any issues with any of her other properties, to your knowledge?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Elliot, Elliot, no.
I'll back Commissioner Blanis's recommendation.
I was going the same, the same way. Actually, if you would take a friendly amendment, and I know staff is going to kill me, but I want to waive it completely.
That's the right answer.
Because if, I mean, I mean-
I second that, Madam.
To Charlie's credit, you know, things happen. And if that is indeed what happened,
It always fell through.
That, you know, it fell through the cracks. And everything I'm hearing is leading me to think that, then that's my friendly amendment to your-
Thank you, and it's accepted. Thank you very much for saying that.
Okay.
That is, Madam Mayor, that is leadership.
Okay.
Thank you.
We had to read the resolution. We have to read the resolution. Madam? Well, wait a minute, maybe we don't have to read the resolution.
We have not read the resolution.
We have, we're saying, please.
I'm sorry.
I made a motion.
Was trying to-
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Suarez was trying to-
So we don't have to read the resolution if the, if the-
Go ahead.
Well, we can put an amount of zero, right?
Yeah.
So we need to read the resolution. It's on the record, Madam Clerk. Please read the resolution.
Okay. Item 11B, resolution of Mayor and City Commissioner of City of West Miami, authorize and city managers to accept the mitigation of $0 from Carlos and Ana Piñero on code enforcement lien for court violation of the property located at 5771 Southwest 11th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by-
Non-applicable.
Non-applicable?
N.A., yes. Then the amount owed shall revert to the original lien amount, providing for an effective date.
I think I already had a motion.
Second.
Second.
And a second.
A second by, I apologize.
Pick Vice Mayor or Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
By Commissioner Suarez. Okay. On the motion, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I truly appreciate all of you.
Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry you had to wait.
No, no problem.
The public comments were very long this evening.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, there is a $12 charge for the release of lien that has to be paid by the property owner. Sorry.
That's all yours. You guys decide who's paid it.
How do we issue payment?
Please come and see the city clerk. She'll be in the office tomorrow. We'll prepare a release of lien and-
Thank you so much. I will be here tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Good night. Thank you. Anybody need a break, or no? Commissioner, you need a break? Commissioner Blanca, you need a break, or no? We're good to go? Okay, next item.
Madam Mayor, let me know how you'd like to proceed.
We got to proceed, I'm sorry. Back to the, back to the original, yes.
Yes. Item 6, report of the city manager.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I've been mostly concentrated on the orders from the state of Florida, the office of the governor. I've issued memorandums of that, on that issue and administrative orders. We've been relying on information from the Managers Association. Mr. Villalobos and I attended a meeting yesterday. And I think that we were so frustrated that we left so more confused at how we entered the meeting. But the fact of the matter is, is that this afternoon, I sent you a follow-up to the Miami-Dade County emergency orders and the protocols that are in place. It's a statement from Mayor Daniela Levine-Cava regarding the summary of what the county attorneys have opined based on their interpretation of the governor's executive order. And basically, the county is still come to the conclusion that there remains a federal mask mandate on certain of their public trains and buses and Metro Rail and whatnot. And that the order should, does not force us to terminate the local state of emergency. So that being said, as we have relied in the past with the executive orders coming out of the mayor's office from Miami-Dade County, I believe that we should continue observing those executive orders. We have advised our employees that they need to wear masks until the order is lifted or until modifications are made. The signage is outside our city hall offices. We're posting COVID-19 on our website. All the publications have come out. We're advising our residents on our social media platform. However, the governor's order did not really, there was some loopholes, if you would, based on what the attorney for Wyserota, who was the presenter on the way that she talked to the group yesterday. She said, and it was Susan Weintraub from Wyserota, is that municipalities should not give up the right to enforce our emergency orders. And so the county has preserved their position on this, and we're going to follow their lead. We've done everything possible to isolate areas dealing with the public, like these acrylic separations. We do have social distancing in our lobbies. And obviously, this has an overflow effect on the services that we continue to review. And those that are listed on the agenda, we'll talk about shortly. So we're closely monitoring this. And obviously, Mr. Villalobos is involved with these, in these conversations as well. So any changes will be communicated to everybody in writing at the same time. So any changes will be communicated to everybody in writing at the same time. The commission, the mayor, all the department directors continuously get updates.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
So we're doing everything we can to make sure that we follow their call.
Is that the end of your report?
That would be the end of my report.
Any questions for the manager? Any questions for the manager?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
You agree, Mr. Attorney?
I'm sorry?
Do you agree?
Well, there's a push and a shot. So the issue is that when we, when we participated yesterday in the meeting, there were like 30 people, more or less.
More, yeah.
And lawyers and managers and the like, and the issue is that everybody had an opinion. And I think that we should err in the, in the position of caution, and I fully agree with the manager that being cautious is the best course of action. There's still about, I read that there's 7,000 more cases of COVID every day in Miami-Dade County, so I fully concur with her.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Any questions? No. Next item, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Yes. Item 7, Report of the City Attorney.
Well, that was my report. She took the wind out of my sails.
Sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. It was very thorough.
Next item, that's because you-
But it, it was quite interesting. It was very long and very contentious, but it was very rewarding that people are interested in more than the written paper, and people are being cautious on the side of being, protecting health and safety and welfare of the people, especially commencing for ourselves.
Thank you, sir. Next item.
Item 8, Report of the City Engineer, known this evening. Item 9, Committee Report, Report of the Mayor.
I don't have one, Madam Clerk.
Any other committee?
Next item.
Next item would be item 10, Unfinished Business. Item 10A, Follow-Up Report by the Office of the City Clerk in reference to board membership. This item was instructed to be, to be brought back at the April 21th commission meeting, and at that meeting, they, this office, the Office of the City Clerk, and together with the City Attorney, were instructed to present a proposal in regards to the membership to the Planning and Zoning Board, Code Enforcement, and Recreation Advice Report. So this office submitted to you via memorandum, a proposal, a request, a, I mean, a plan of action, which is included in your agenda packet, and I, I, I mean, I've submitted what I thought was the best course of action, and I yield to you, to this body, for any recommendation and instructor on how, instructions on how to proceed.
First of all, Madam Clerk, I have to say, and I already told you in person, this was an excellent report, excellent report and recommendation. I mean, you, you did exactly what we asked you to do, so you were very thorough in the report. So thank you. Okay, I will open it up to the table. If there's any comments or questions. I'm sure we've all read the, the clerk's very thorough report, so if you have any questions, now's the time.
Madam Clerk, I can't remember if it was a discussion where in the report where we discussed starting to make the appointment at June 2nd meeting. Was that a discussion I had with you, or was that in the report?
Yes. On a conversation we had, I expressed that it was up to this legislative party to determine when appointments or reappointments should take place. If you would like to do so, we can bring this item back at the June 2nd meeting. I should also inform you that I won't be able to attend the second meeting, the, the June 2nd meeting, because I'll be on, out of the office on, on annual leave. I'll make the request to your, to, to, to you on, on tomorrow. So even if I'm not on the meeting, of course, you are, you are, I mean, it's okay to make any appointment. At that point, I'll leave the, the city manager as an ex officio city clerk, and any appointment will be welcomed, and then we'll determine a, a course of action in terms of, of, of the terms, which I recommend to be determined by lot on, on my memorandum.
Right. So my recommendation would be that we start making the appointments June 2nd, and then maybe if we like run it to, to the next meeting following that. That way, it gives everyone time to interview candidates, whatever they want to do, to, to make sure that they get their appointment correct, and also gives the clerk time to send out any notices that she needs to send out to, you know, inform the board members what's going on, because I don't think it's happened yet, and anything else that needs to be done. So my recommendation was, would be that we don't bring it forward on the May 19th, but start it June 2nd. Obviously, in the meantime, Mr. Attorney and Mr. Director, you know, the board, the board doesn't exist, so we can't have, we can be, you can't be having planning and zoning meetings during that time period until there's a legitimate board, board appointed. But that would be my recommendation.
I'm sorry. We're going to say the board doesn't exist? That's a slap in the face to our residents who have served faithfully for how long, and now we're going to tell them they don't exist?
No, their, their terms have expired. They're, they're not sitting in their current, in their current seats, and nobody is. The board, in terms of function and validity, does not exist.
They exist.
They exist as people. They don't exist as board members.
So we're going to cancel, we're, we're not going to have meetings, and the residents that have things pending are not going to be allowed to come forward?
Let's, 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 very simply, Mr. Attorney, can we have another planning and zoning meeting validly?
And if, and if not, then what happens to all the ones we've had? What are we going to say, they're all invalid as well?
Well, I, I, I have a, a theory on that, if you want to hear it, which is that this board rather by-
I want to hear the attorney. I want to hear the attorney's theory.
There's a situation that exists right now that we have discovered, and I believe that even though the, both boards have served very faithfully, that at the point as brought out by the Vice Mayor, the term had lapsed, so you should appoint people that with staggered terms. And yes, I believe that you should have the meetings commencing after you have nominated the people. There's only 30 days. I don't know that, do you have anything urgent, Mr. Penn?
No, not at this time.
Okay. That would be the best course of action, I would say.
And how is this appointment going to take place, Mr. Attorney? We have, how many, how many spots do we have to appoint? There's only, there's only five of us. So what's the total of all these boards that we have to appoint people, and how is that process going to take place?
Madam Mayor, you have nine members on the Code Enforcement Board, which is seven members and two alternates, and you have five members on the Planning and Zoning Board with one alternate. But nothing keeps you from reappointing the people that are serving now today.
But in what order will we do that? That's what I'm saying. Who goes first in their appointment?
It doesn't really matter.
You appoint everyone taking an appointment, doesn't matter. Did you read, it's in the memo. Everyone makes an appointment. Everyone makes one appointment.
And you want to do this at the June 2nd meeting?
I, I was suggesting, it was a suggestion, that we start it in the June 2nd meeting. That way, it gives everyone here time to interview their candidates and interview and, and decide who they want to appoint. Two weeks, I think, might be too short to do that and to notice the, the board members what's going on in, in formal letters and, and whatnot. So that was my, my recommendation was June 2nd.
All right, so we have 14 positions to appoint to.
No, the, the memo doesn't say that.
Nine and five is 14.
But, but the, the whole Code Enforcement Board isn't getting reappointed.
How many positions do we have to appoint to, Mr. Penn?
By, uh-
Was it three or four?
No, it's more like five or six.
For the Code Enforcement Board or-
Total.
Code Enforcement, okay. From the Code Enforcement, if you go to the memo, there are members that, whose term has not, I mean, are not expired yet.
How many members?
Some, okay. How many members on the Code Enforcement Board? We have eight members.
That their terms haven't expired?
According to the memo, and as I said in the memo, if we follow the guidelines by Florida statute, section 16205, Lisa Coelho expires in November 2021, Michael Smart and Raul de la Rosa. Nara Lomilian is serving, if he's, if she's serving two terms, expires in 2023, and Jeanette Vasquez, Lourdes Gonzalez and Antonia Chavez, they expire in November 2022.
So how many vacancies do you have in the Code Enforcement?
Well, Mrs. Smart has resigned. I have to forward his email.
I'm not aware of that.
I have to forward you his email.
So, I mean, from now, we have two.
Two, two in, in, in Code Enforcement?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, nothing keeps you, if you're satisfied with your board, from making the motion today and reappointing them.
So-
I make a motion.
Absolutely not.
I make a motion.
We discuss this every once you get an appointment. Absolutely not. Nobody goes by motion.
Mr. Penn, Mr. Penn, just-
Mr. Penn is not, not on this commission. Mr. Penn is not serving on this commission.
Excuse me, sir. I can listen to my, to my public, to my public services director.
Absolutely. I am very against the motion. I hope everyone does not, no one seconds that motion.
So, so, so I think, I think, I think the effect that we want to obtain here is to, to, to be legal, to be, to abide by our, our ordinance and-
And there's nothing saying we can't, we can't keep them there.
There's nothing that precludes us-
From keeping them.
From reassigning or, or appointing again deserving members.
That's correct. All you have to do is give them a term limit. That's all.
Give them a term limit.
I mean, I do respect to, to those residents that have, again, faithfully served. That's the very least we can do. Even if we make it for a very short term, that is the very least. If I was them, I would think, I would take this as a slap in the face.
Absolutely, absolutely not.
Thank you, thank you for what you've done, but you're out of here.
Absolutely not.
Because of our failure, because of our failure to realize that, that whatever, you know, what they do to pick up on this.
They are, they are serving the city. There is a lot of people in this, in this community who, because of the fact that nobody was, was keeping track of the fact that they have three-year terms, have not had the opportunity to serve.
We'll give them the opportunity as soon as, as soon as we re, if, if we choose to reappoint these for a certain, a short period of time, to let them finish gracefully, to not let them, kick them out the door, that's what we should do.
Absolutely. I, I, I believe, made three, including yourself, three members of this commission do not have appointments on the Code Enforcement Board today. I know you've made a lot of points to Code, to, sorry, to, to planning and zoning. I know you've made like seven appointments to the Code Enforcement Board, but no, you don't have an appointment to the planning and zoning, neither do I, neither does Commissioner Blanca. This, it was, the Code of Four terms are set up so that when new commissioners come in, they can make their appointments to the people they trust in the community and they want to serve in those boards. That has been limited because no one has kept track of the terms, for one case, for 17 years. So there's one that, that expired for 17 years. There's, they don't open up. We need to allow people to serve the community who are-
And we will.
I, I, I'm totally against your motion. I think the very way to do it is everyone gets one appointment. If you want to appoint somebody who's on the board, I encourage you to appoint somebody who's on the board right now. But everyone of these commissioners gets one appointment.
Can I interject and say something?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Vice Mayor, I applaud your po, your passion. I really, really do, because you are right. He is correct.
But we can't fault our residents for that.
Totally correct. And you know what? And, and thankfully, you know, he, he brought that up. That's something that we had overlooked.
Agreed.
And, and you, Madam Mayor, I, I applaud your passion too, and I agree with you too. Okay? It would be a slap in the face to those that have served faithfully for so long. Again, we sit here and we need to try to find balance, okay? We need to find something that can be acceptable. And like I say, you know, there's, there's, there's passion on your side and there's passion on your side, Vice Mayor, but for the sake of keeping the city functioning and addressing and, and, and serving as, as, as we need to, we need to find an amicable, agreeable solution here with some type of balance, and we need, we need to decide, and, and, and like you say, it, it could be a very short period of time.
Short term. Let them finish gracefully.
And then, and then from then on, then you know what? We would faithfully, you know, execute, you know, the, the process as, as we should, as it's been brought up by the Vice Mayor.
Very clear. There is a recommendation by the clerk on this, and, and it's in the memo. The recommendation was that everyone appoint one member. But this idea that it could be a very short time is totally false. There is terms. They start on June, what is it, June 30th of, of, June 30th, right? The terms start and end on June 30th, correct?
For the, for the planning-
For planning and zoning.
For the planning and zoning is June, and for the Code Enforcement is November.
So we, we don't just decide, okay, we're going to give them to a term of two years, and this one a term of one year, and this one, you know, we're, we're going to have them serve for a short time. They have terms. We just haven't been following it for a very, very long time, which is dangerous because this is a quasi judicial board that requires a four, fifth vote to overturn. So this is something that, you know, we can't just play around with. I, I think that there has to be appointments made, and the, you know, it, it's, I think we have to get away from this, from this idea that this, this board doesn't have terms just like us.
We're not saying they don't have terms.
The only difference is we're elected. Hold on. We're, we're, we're elected, right? But they are appointed, but the terms are exactly the same. They have three-year terms, we have four-year terms. Once their terms expire, just like once our terms expire, we are no longer sitting here. They have the same exact setup. It's not a slap in the face. It's, it's actually, frankly, it's a slap in the face to all the residents in the years and years who haven't been able to give an opportunity to serve. So I fully respect anyone who serves the city, because they don't get, I mean, they get paid $20 or whatever, but they don't get paid to do this. But I, I, I don't see why you have to just re-up everybody, you know, for, because, because what? Because for 30 days? For 30 days, when, when the director has even told us there's no, there's no urgent matters coming? For 30 days, let's get it right. Let's all make an appointment, right? The terms will be decided by law by the clerk afterwards, just like it would have to happen if you appointed the whole board today, because there's no, there's no way to determine the terms otherwise. And let's go with the city clerk's recommendation that she wrote this beautiful memo on, and everybody appoint one person, one person. Everyone gets one appointment. Five seats, five commissioners. Everybody gets one appointment, and then let's just move on.
You know, I, I'd like to, to say something, and I, I agree, I agree with you, Vice Mayor, you know, this is the proper way to do things. But considering how hard it is to find a resident of the city of West Miami to serve and devote their time, you know, I mean, I, I have struck out so many times trying to get a resident to serve on the Code Enforcement Board, to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board. I mean, the, the, and again, the people that we have are, are people that somehow, you know, within them have found, you know, the, the interest to, to, to serve because they know that they are doing something that the city needs. So-
But this is very simple, Commissioner. I appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate what you're saying.
Well, let him finish. Let him finish, sir.
If, if there is, if there is, if you can't find somebody to serve, right, because somebody new, it doesn't have to be someone new, reappoint someone who's currently serving on the board.
That's what we just said.
And, and we will.
That's what we just said.
But as your appointment, as your individual appointment, not collective appointment across the board, everyone just go ahead and, and continue. I'm saying, if you can't find somebody, I can give you a lot of recommendations of people who want to serve, but if you can't find some, or you have somebody on the board who you would appoint independently, appoint them. There, there's no, I mean, experience is a good thing. Appoint them. But, you know, I, I don't see why that's an argument for having to just go forward and reappoint everybody and, and then do the same thing we would do if we had, all had an appointment. Let's just make it equitable. There's five commissioners, five appointments, everybody makes an appointment. You're not restricted. You, you, if you can't find somebody, appoint somebody who's currently on the board. No problem.
I think it's disrespectful. It would be a disgrace to the current members.
Which is a disgrace that they were never told their terms.
If we say, well, that's, that happened a long time ago, Vice Mayor. We, none of us were sitting up here then, so there's nothing we can do about that at this time. I just do not want to, in their face, disrespect our current board members by saying, you're out of here. Just like that.
Their term is up. Their term is up. You can reappoint them. I, I would love to have, you know, for the, for the members who aren't reappointed, I would love to have a, you know, recognition, a little proof that they haven't gotten in 17 years probably. But it's a, it's, it, it's not a justification for just reappointing across the board. I'm sorry, every, every commissioner should get their, their appointment if they have sat here.
And you will, when, when we, when we get back on track to appointing by the terms-
Everyone, everyone knows my position.
May I, may I talk?
Yes. Yes. Elliot.
Okay, let me tell you something.
Yes, yes.
No one was renewed on the-
Yeah, Elliot, let, 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 I, let, let Commissioner Blanca speak. Go ahead, Commissioner Blanca. Go ahead.
I served in the Code Enforcement and the Zoning Board, and one day, they told me, your time is up. And somebody else nominated me for zoning and board until I came here.
Okay.
But they, that day, they said, your termination is up.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Suarez, did you have something to say? Commissioner Suarez, did you have something to say, or were you trying to get my attention for Commissioner Blanca? Okay, I guess it was getting my attention from Commissioner Blanca.
I'm going to make a motion to go with the clerk's recommendation.
I think so.
You, we don't have a second.
I did.
Can, can there be a clarification on exactly what this motion is, what it entails?
What is the motion for what?
Sure. Madam Clerk, can, can you explain your recommendation?
Okay. According to my recommendation is-
What is the motion?
Let's go by boards. Planning and zoning board to appoint or reappoint all members. For the Code Enforcement Board, as I state on my memo, there are members whose term will expire in 2021 if we follow the guidelines of the statute. Lisa Coelho and Raul de la Rosa, because Michael Smart, I, I just learned that he resigned or will resign. Lisa Coelho and Raul de la Rosa will expire in November of 2021. Nara Lomilian in 2023, Jeanette Vasquez, Lourdes Gonzalez, and Antonia Chavez in 2022, and Jerry Diaz, who is the alternate, expires in November of 2023. My recommendation is to appoint or reappoint those member, each of you to appoint those, a member to the Code Enforcement- a member to the code enforcement board since I, I consider that their terms have, have lapsed already. And after that, subsequent to that, to, to determine the, to determine by law the terms for those members. But you should...
You, did you say to reappoint those members? Is that what you just said?
It's your decision to the members or to appoint or reappoint.
Go ahead, go. Okay.
Be aware that they have term limits and they've served already certain terms. So it's, it's, it's an, I, I tried to explain it in the, in the best way possible, but it's up to you. How would you like to proceed?
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking, clerk, Ms. Madam Clerk, is not for you to give an additional recommendation. I'm making a motion to accept your recommendation. So I just need you to explain to the board what that is, what your recommendation is. I, we understand that it's our decision. What I'm saying is, please explain your recommendation.
She just did. To reappoint.
No, but, but the planning and zoning as well, the planning and zoning.
Okay, for planning and zoning, my recommendation was to...
I don't understand the recommendation. I don't understand anything in the motion. Because what do you want? You want to everybody out?
Yes.
That's what you want?
Yes.
No, that's what the law says. They're already out.
But you want that, that zoning board be empty?
Not for long. You're gonna make an appointment.
That's what you're looking for?
That's what exists. That's what, that's, that's what exists today.
But that's your motion?
Yes.
Yes, that's my motion. That's what exists today.
And the zoning board without members?
No.
You're gonna make, that's what exists today, Commissioner. That's what exists today. Today, the zoning board does not have members. Today, the zoning board does not have members. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm requesting is to appoint the zoning board.
We don't have our residents faithfully sitting there every time they come. We don't have members. Go ahead.
Okay, did you understand the law?
No, I'm not a lawyer, Vice Mayor, so I guess I don't.
Well, maybe you should go ahead.
And I don't need you to school me on the law, by the way. I won't have my attorney school me on the law.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm sorry. You don't wanna play schoolteacher as you.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't need you to school me on the law. That's my, that is my attorney's job.
Well, the attorney did, so you didn't listen to it.
Go ahead. Commissioner, go ahead. Go ahead. Commissioner, go, Commissioner, go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón, if I understand, and I'm going to repeat, your motion is to tell all the members in the zoning board, your term is up, you have to go out from the board. So the zoning board is going to be without members?
No, my recommendation is to appoint a zoning board. The zoning board does not have members today. Today, their terms have expired. Their, they, the planning and zoning board does not have members today.
With your idea, I told you the other day, if we don't have people, if we don't have possible people from the boards, we may reappoint it.
Of course.
And I give you an, maybe, I give you an example. Eddie Muñoz was fifteen years and, and he did a great job.
Correct.
So it's not a thing. It's not bad to be in the zoning board many years because they are doing a good job and we don't have, we don't have substitutes. It was what the Commissioner Planes said. You have, you have to go out to look at people to serve in the board. It's very hard.
You don't have to look for them.
So I don't agree with you.
You can reappoint somebody who's there.
You, you finish and let me know when you finish.
I, 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 let me just, I'll, I'll try to say very, very clearly because I know there's the glass in the way and miscommunication.
I hear you.
The, the, if you can't find somebody, if you cannot find somebody to serve on the board who does not, who is not currently serving on the board, you can reappoint somebody who's currently serving. There's no restriction for you to do that. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that the terms that they currently have lapsed and a long time ago. So they don't, they're not currently occupying those positions. If you want, if you can't find somebody who serve on the board, who's not on the board, appoint somebody who's currently on the board. There's no problem.
When you finish, let me know.
Okay, so, so, so I, so I, I would like to make a motion.
I didn't finish yet, Blanes.
I made that motion already. It was shot down.
If you want to nominate, I, Commissioner, Eddie Diaz-Padrón, Vice Mayor, if you want to appoint somebody to that board, it may be an empty seat. You may appoint it. You don't have to tell everybody out because your term is over. And then you have to reappoint it or you have to tell everybody go out of the board and then we have to get, create a new board with the new people. And we may be one, two, three, four weeks, a month without the boards and, and, and members in the board. And this is, that's the way. I, I understand that you want to apply the four years.
No, I'm not applying anything.
That's what I understand. So this is very, very confusing.
Mr. Attorney, do we currently have people serving on the planning and zoning board with unexpired terms? With unexpired terms?
Unexpired term, my understanding is that we do not have anyone that, with unexpired terms.
So the planning, zoning board is empty. Their terms have expired, just like our terms expire every four years. What I am suggesting is that we make appointments. And it's very, I mean, this is not a very, this is the most equitable way to do it. The clerk even recommended this. You each make an appointment. I don't, I don't see how that's controversial. I think that should be celebrated, that everyone makes one appointment.
I, 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 let me, let me, let me say something. I clearly heard the clerk say, "We do have members currently on the board with, that their terms have not expired." I clearly heard that. I would, I'm just talking boards in general. I didn't know we were talking about one board specifically.
Planning and zoning.
I thought we were talking about just boards in general, because the same thing applies to both boards. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
Planning and zoning is set. We wouldn't have to worry about the planning and zoning. I think we need to worry about the planning and zoning.
That's not true, sir. That's not true. He's talking about both boards.
The planning and zoning board is expired. There's nobody serving.
It's both boards. It's both boards.
If I may?
Yes.
Okay. As Vice Mayor has said, all the terms per our zoning ordinance, their terms have all expired. Okay? Because it is your duty every election year after you were elected to reappoint the person that you wish on the zoning board. It hasn't happened in many years. Okay? However, it doesn't limit you from reappointing the same person that's there today. Okay?
That's why I started this conversation an hour ago.
Can I finish? Can I finish? One sixty-two, code enforcement is completely separate. Okay? They do have term limits and they do have reappointment limits.
Yes.
Okay? Three terms of three years. That's the max. Nine years is the most that a, a member could be on. And then they have to separate for a certain amount of time before they could possibly ever come back on the board.
Yes, the code enforcement has term limits, not the planning and zoning board.
Exactly. So, so like I explained to you earlier, you could tonight, if you wish, pick a member and reappoint. You could pick a member and reappoint. You can pick a member and reappoint. It's only if you want to go look for a member, such as Vice Mayor wants to do, which you can. So out of the five, four can be reappointed tonight, if you wish.
Do you have any opening, so he may appoint tonight somebody?
Again, Commissioner, you have five members. All members' terms have expired by ordinance. Okay? So obviously, if you all pick one, there will be one that stays out. That will be the Vice Mayor's pick.
Okay, this sounds, you know...
If he wishes, but that's up to him.
We, we have an extraordinary situation here.
Yes.
We have been operating, you know, for many years, you know, under, under our present situation. The Vice Mayor has brought up, you know, a, a very important, you know, and, and...
Correct. Valid point.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. The way that we should be proceeding from now on. But since we have not been doing that, I think that for the, for the, for the sake, you know, the service to, to our community, we should do just that. Each one of us, pick a member that has, that has expired and reappoint them.
That's your option.
Okay, I think that's what we should do.
If, if you guys are ready to make an appointments tonight, I'll make an appointment tonight.
Okay, so who's, who, uh...
Guys, wait, wait. Commissioner Blanes.
I don't think that's the way to go.
Let's remember, these members have no idea about this. I do not think we should make this appointment tonight.
I, I agree. That's why I'm saying June second.
That is, that is, that is, that is a wrong on top of a wrong on top of a wrong.
Give, give me a member that needs to be appointed. I'll appoint him right now.
But Commissioner, they, they don't know any. Someone's gonna be left out here. And that, and that person has no idea. That is the wrong way to, to thank our residents for the time they have served on this board.
That's why I was suggesting June second, because that way not only gives time for anybody who, who wishes to go look for another member or interview the current member, that they might not, you know, know his, his positions or ideas, but also to allow the clerk and administration to clear everything up with the current members and notice them. That's why I'm suggesting June second as, as the starting, as the, as the appointment date. That, that's the, that's the only reason why I was suggesting June second, for that reason alone. Mr. Penna has said that there's no urgent matter right now. That is, that is one month, right? One month and we can put this issue behind us. And we have our terms set up and we'll be operating like a old machine like we should have been for many years. This, this issue wasn't, you know, uh, you know, the fault of, of the current clerk either. But we have to get, we have to, we have to correctly appoint the members in order to get into compliance. So that's why I was suggesting, if you want to make, you know, appoint somebody from the current commis, uh, from the current board, absolutely do it. Let's just do it June second. Everyone gets an appointment. Their notices go out. Everything is clean. That, that, that's my, that's my recommendation. That's my motion. And there, there is a second on it.
Again, just for the record, I will be away also on the June second meeting, so you're aware.
Then we're not having this on June second. Not with you and the clerk both gone.
It's an appointment. What does, what does Mr. Penna need to be here for an appointment?
I just think I, I want all hands on deck for this.
It's on appointment, Madam Mayor.
I'm giving you my opinion, Vice Mayor. Take it or leave it. It's up to the rest of the, it's what, the rest of this table.
I, I would recommend June sixteenth then. If, if June sixteenth, and, correct me if, if that's, if that's a meeting that, it's a meeting date, June sixteenth? I would recommend June sixteenth then for the appointment.
I have a motion. I have a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
The motion to, well, he present that tell all the, the members...
To appoint on June sixteen.
And then the zoning board will be empty?
To make the appointments on June sixteen.
Either appoint, new appointments or reappoint.
Let the commi, make a vote, sir.
No, I don't understand yet. Three people talk at the same time. The motion is for the Vice Mayor to appoint somebody tonight?
No, no. To make the appointments or reappointments at the June sixteen meeting.
His motion is?
To make the appointments or reappointments to the code enforcement board, to the planning and zoning board at the June sixteen meeting, commission meeting.
For to the, for to reappoint the people?
Appointments or reappointments.
Appointment or reappointment. But the motion that you're asking for is not apply the four years tonight and, and let the board without members? Is that your motion?
The board does not have members today. The mem, the board does not have members today. I'm asking us to, to appoint or reappoint on June six, June sixteenth.
To appoint or reappoint June sixteen?
Correct.
But the, but the members who aren't in the boards actually will be in their seats until that day.
They're not on their seats today.
Well, I vote no. I don't understand your motion.
Keep going, Madam Clerk.
It's too complicated and I, I know the hard is to get new people for the boards.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk, next. Call the next vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez? Three, two. I didn't, uh, did not pass.
Next item, please.
But Madam Mayor and members...
You don't have a planning and zoning board.
Vice Mayor, that vote was already made.
But, okay, but Madam Mayor...
The vote was already made, sir. We're not gonna discuss this anymore.
I, I'm sorry. You have to discuss this, but I'm not suggesting we go my route.
Mister Attorney, if the vote is already made, do we continue this discussion?
Madam Mayor, if the motion fails, there should be a substitute motion. So something is done, because there is nothing at this point. So the way that perhaps the Vice Mayor presented it was voted down by you.
Okay, then I, I'll make a motion. We reappoint the existing board.
Madam Mayor, usually, usually chairs do not make motions.
Well, nothing's usual about tonight.
Well, I...
Okay, so somebody else make a motion.
It's up to you.
Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion. I motion we reappoint the existing board.
Madam Mayor, usually each member has a voting...
You said we could make a motion, that since the first motion failed.
Madam Mayor, let me finish, please.
Go ahead.
Each one of the commissioners have a right to vote on one member. So therefore, it should not be a motion to reappoint five, because each commissioner does not have the right to, to, uh, to, to select it. So, see, the last appointment that I see here was done by Commissioner Blanes. Okay? So the next appointment should be made by Commissioner Suarez. The following appointment should be by Commissioner Blanca. The third appointment should be by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón. The fourth amendment should be by the mayor. And the fifth amendment should be again by Commissioner, uh, uh, Blanes. So therefore, you, if you want, if you want to appoint one or two or three...
It shows me next on the list for an appointment. I don't know what, you look at the planning and zoning board? It shows I'm next to make an appointment.
He's looking at the code enforcement board.
You're looking at the wrong one.
I'm sorry?
You're looking at the wrong one.
The planning and zoning board, all of you must appoint or reappoint because all terms are expired.
That's the code enforcement board.
Planning and zoning board is here.
Okay, planning and zoning, okay.
That's where I'm bringing you from.
And, and Madam Mayor, besides if you appoint, there are terms that must be determined.
According to what you have done in the past.
Okay, and we're gonna do all that tonight?
According to what you have done in the past, the last appointment was done by Commissioner Blanes. So the next appointment should be suggested by Commissioner Suarez. The following appointment should be suggested by Mayor Rodriguez. The other one, by Commissioner Blanca, and the other one by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón. If you want to appoint one, that's up to you. I can't say anything. If you don't want to appoint that person today, you can do it afterwards.
Well, if we need another motion and you say I can't make it, then somebody needs to make a motion. If you're saying it's not customary for me to make a motion, then I will yield to your advice and I will not make a motion.
Okay, motion to do what the attorney says.
Motion to what?
You understand what the attorney said is what was, what my, what my motion was, right?
To, to reappoint. To reappoint tonight, to reappoint tonight the boards.
What the city attorney, if I may, I'm sorry, I, is, what I understand that the city attorney is advising you that each member has an opportunity to reappoint or appoint.
One member.
One member, not the whole board.
Not the whole board.
Again, remember, these board members do not have any idea of this. So someone is going to be left out and that person is gonna find out after tonight that they are no longer on the board.
That's why I don't think it should be tonight. That's why I was suggesting June
Is everyone comfortable with doing this on June sixteenth without Mr. Penna or the clerk being here?
No, no. Sixteenth, we will be here.
I'm sorry, sixteen.
Yes.
Okay, so what's the motion?
I think to, to do this on the sixteenth. I think we're spinning our wheels here.
You need to do a mo...
Motion, motion to, um, to do this, um... The appointment or reappointment on June sixteenth.
I need a second. Call the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
If it's the same motion of before, I vote no.
Continue, sir. Continue, Madam Clerk.
You're gonna be here all night.
Continue, Madam Clerk. Continue, Madam Clerk. Call the vote.
Commissioner Suarez. Commissioner Blanes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. One moment, please.
The attorney wants to know what the motion is. He doesn't even know what the motion is. He made it, but he doesn't know what it is.
To do this on the sixteenth.
There was, the motion failed to, to do it on June, on June sixteen previously. Again, Commissioner Blanes now this time made a motion to do it on June sixteen and they are voting for June sixteen.
Okay, that's a prevailing vote. That was the prevailing vote, so therefore you can proceed and do it. In other words, that, that would be a reasserting of the motion that was failed. Okay? So the prevailing side, which is you, Commissioner Blanes, can make that motion, which is, uh, is the one that Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón had made before.
Right.
Okay, so we have the motion by, by Commissioner Blanes, second by Commissioner Blanca, and no by Commissioner Suarez, a yes by Commissioner Blanes. Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez, how do you vote?
No.
And Commissioner Blanes, I'm ready.
Commissioner, I'm sorry?
Commissioner Blanes didn't vote.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Commissioner Blanca needs to vote.
Okay, Commissioner, okay, we have motion, it's Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanes voted yes.
Yes, I said.
So we have yes, yes, we have three, two motion passes. So June 16 is the time where you're gonna have the opportunity to make appointments or reappointments. This is for all boards or just for the Planning and Zoning Board?
The remaining side of the board.
Don't look at me, I...
Now, the next item is the...
No, 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 we can't go to the next item, sir. The clerk has a very valid question. Please restate your question.
Yes, it, okay, a motion just passed for all boards or just the Planning and Zoning Board?
We were only talking about Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Penn?
Again, the Code Enforcement Board, according to you, have a valid board.
Right, there's only two members that need to be reappointed or reappointed.
But they need to be, uh-huh.
So, that, 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 now you can do, you can do next meeting, you can do it, meet the following, following.
Correct, you don't need a motion for that.
Reconsider the, the Code Enforcement and lead the Planning and Zoning Board with this, with this vote. Okay, so we'll do Planning and Zoning Board on June 16 and reconsider appointments or reappointments to the Code Enforcement Board also in June 16. And at that time also, the terms will be determined by law.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were making, I thought you were making your notes. No, no, I'm sorry, next item. I was waiting for you. I thought you were, you were like writing, I'm sorry, I didn't look up.
No, I just...
My apologies, I was going over your, your memo.
It's okay. Item 10B is the selection of date for the three dedication ceremony in memory of Inez Suarez. This item is coming from the April 21st, 2021 meeting.
I would like to defer that for the next meeting, please.
Okay.
The next meeting, no, in June, the first meeting in June.
The first meeting for June 2nd, okay.
Thank you.
The first for June 2nd, are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item would be item 11C, which is the discussion in reference to recognition to our state delegation on the allocation of $350,000 for our potable water project. This item is by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Sure, I'll be quick on this. This is a sort of a report and a quick request from my colleagues. Um, I've been in constant contact with Senator Ilana Garcia and Representative Demi Bosetta over the last couple of months in regards to our potable water project. Um, when I went to Tallahassee, I had meetings with Speaker Pro Temp, Brian Avila, Chair Rodriguez, and Water and Natural Resources Chair, Jody Tomcow, on the issue. Um, I was speaking with Senator Ilana Garcia and Representative Bosetta Cabrera yesterday at an event with Governor DeSantis, and they both expressed interest in coming in for legislative updates. Um, so I'll be extending invitations to them with the clerk. Um, they, uh, I, I, when they come in, we did get an allocation. I would like to be able to present them, from our Commission, a, some sort of recognition. I don't know if it's in the form of a proclamation, or, or I don't know what you guys are, you know, would, would want to, would want to do, but for their hard work in Tallahassee. Um, so that's something that I would request from you all. Um, aside from that, um, if the, if the money comes through, which they both expressed a lot of confidence that the item won't get vetoed, uh, if the money comes through, I would like to be able to show our reps, um, how much, how grateful we are for the money, not only for them, but for people who come after them, that they know that we are, that we show our gratitude. Um, so, if the money comes through, I would, I would like to, to be able to put up some sort of temporary billboard or signage along the construction site during the construction, thanking them. Um, that's something that I will be bringing up, hopefully, if the money comes through at a later time. The other thing I wanna report on this is the federal money. Um, I have been working with Congresswoman Marila Vida Salazar and her team for the last few months as well, on the potable water. Um, about a week ago, or two weeks ago, uh, the manager submitted a request for $3 million for a potable water project. The Congresswoman has indicated to me that this is a priority for her, as indicated to the committee in Congress. Uh, the request needed a last-second letter of support as part of its eligibility requirements. And I'm saying last second meaning they, they requested it from us on, on Friday in the morning of, and it was due on Friday at 3:00 PM. Um, so that's something that Commissioner Sosa, uh, did for us without hesitancy. She, she wrote us a letter in support, a great letter of support to Marila Vida's, uh, office, and, uh, that basically kept our project alive for federal funding. Um, so for that and for constant support of the city, I would like at some point to recognize her as well with some sort of physical proclamation, or, or something that will, you know, I'll, I'll bring up at a later time for Commissioner Rebecca Sosa. Um, that's pretty much it in terms of this discussion item, it was more of a report. And, uh, again, I would like to request those proclamations or some other sort of recognition for our state, state senator and state rep when they come in for their, their legislative updates.
Do we need to vote on this?
We should have a blessing so that we can proceed.
I, I concur.
Should I call the board? Are we in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is item...
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a specific meeting, Vice Mayor, that you would like to schedule their appearance?
Well, that has to be, that has to be discussed with them. That has to be discussed with them. I, I discussed with them, um, the next meeting and the meeting following, I'd like to do them separately, because they have different, some of the things that they're gonna say is they overlap, and I don't want to make them feel, I don't want them to feel uncomfortable in giving their legislative updates, even though they have their own accomplishments as well. Um, so I'll schedule that with you and the clerk and them.
Okay.
And, um, but hopefully in the next, uh, the next two meetings, uh, two or three meetings, we'll, we'll get them out of the way. But if, with the blessing of this Commission, I'd like to have those, um, proclamations or, or recognitions, uh, done prior, that way we, we're prepared for them.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item 11D, discussion in reference to, uh, uh, 4th of July by Mayor Rodriguez.
Madam Manager, I'll yield to you on this, we've had many discussions.
Yes, ma'am, we sure have, and there's been so much uncertainty as to, um, when we go back to normal, and, and I think you and I, Madam Mayor, agree that at least this year, we're not gonna have time to prepare, even if they lift the order by July 1st. This is a major undertaking for the city, and I concur that we should cancel the 4th of July in the event that July 1st is not the magic date. We really can't spend all this money, enter into a contract with a vendor, um, check the facilities with the fire department, there's just a lot of things that happen before these events take place. So I would, um, definitely recommend to the Commission that our collective recommendation be accepted and to leave it, hopefully, for the big bang next year. And maybe we can put something together for the 75th anniversary of the city, um, in conjunction with the 4th of July. You may wanna consider something like uniting those events.
All in favor of taking the manager's recommendation?
Aye.
Aye. Next item? Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item 11E, discussion and possible action of the possibility of having a limited summer camp program with guided recommendations by the Office of the City Manager and the Recreation Director.
Thank you. Again, following the protocols by the Office of the Governor, the County, and the South Florida Parks Coalition, we are comfortable that we are able to, um, to invite 100 kids, and that would be our, my recommendation, which is also joined with the recommendation of our Parks Director, is we make the summer camp program available to a limited number of children. Of course, West Miami residents would be the priority. Uh, those kids would get the first opportunity to go, um, to camp. And, uh, again, uh, we're being very cautious about taking kids to field trips. John is making calls and trying to see if this, if you approve us to move forward with a modified summer camp, he would, um, he would bring field trips to the rec center. Mayor, you know, we met the other day with our Parks Director, and I know you, um, also wanted to yield to Commissioner Blanes on this, as he has been involved with the pa, in the past. But we do believe that we are able to offer a program where children can interact, socialize, go outdoors, play sports, play games, and have somewhat of a very fun summer. Um, John Michael is also working with Miami-Dade County Public Schools to see if there are internship opportunities, and there, it looks like they will have internship opportunities where the county pays for Miami-Dade Public School System, I'm sorry. They will pay for six weeks for some of the interns to come in, learn, exchange with the kids, and interact. So I think it's a good idea, I think we're ready to move forward in that direction. Um, and, but we have to limit it to 100 kids to meet the demands of the three foot, feet separation inside the building, although we wanna do a lot of outdoor activities.
Thank you for the recommendation. All in favor of taking the, the manager's recommendation on limited summer camp opening? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Manager, next item, Madam Clerk?
Item 11F, discussion in reference to possible modified reopening of the West Miami Community Center for West Miami residents only, that complies with the County and CDC orders by the Office of the City Manager and Community Center Director.
Thank you. Um, I had issued a report late this afternoon, but my assistant is on vacation, and I don't know whether Anari was able to interject it. I, I sent it late this afternoon. Um, but anyways, in a nutshell, our Community Center Director is working on her closeout monitoring report with the Alliance for Aging for this quarter. I met with her today, and unfortunately, she was not here because she, she was under the weather. Um, this said, she felt that it would be important to talk about a possible soft opening, and Mayor, you and I have talked about this as well, which we suspect can begin as early as June 1st, 2021. But before we open, we have to conduct an assessment of the congregate clients. The assessment will tell us, and I discussed this with Commissioner Suarez today, uh, when he visited our office, the assessment will tell us if the congregate clients are able to return to the program, or if they have to be placed on home-delivered meal program. This is, they've been on lockdown pretty much for the last 14 months, and while many of them want to return, we have to go through what they call an assessment process. And this is all guided by the Alliance for Aging. Um, so the process will take us about three weeks to conduct the interviews with our seniors. However, there's a breakdown that I prepared, and based on today's numbers, we have 46 West Miami residents that are congregate clients. And those are the ones that we would primarily conduct an assessment to see if they're able to come back. And I would not recommend, if we do a soft opening, that we invite any non-residents to return to the center until we exhaust all the West Miami senior citizens first to return. Uh, we have, um, 46 non-West, non-West Miami residents as well in the congregate program. So I would prioritize West Miami senior citizens first, and then when they loosen up their restrictions, we can invite the non-residents to return. Again, all of this is subject to assessments to be conducted by the center. And then we have, on home-delivered meals, we have 65 City of West Miami residents that will continue to receive their meals, and 40 non-residents of the city, um, non-residents receiving a meal service, a home-delivered meal service from us as part of the ongoing program. And that has not been interrupted. So, um, we can start our assessment and bring a report back as to what the numbers are starting to look like, how many seniors would like to return, how many of them will have difficulty, and we can have a better idea of, um, you know, what our opening is gonna look like. As discussed, I think that we will have to do a face-in program before we open up the doors and overwhelm our seniors that have been on lockdown for such a long time. My recommendation would be to offer their meal program, go back to the meal program, and jujitsu class, um, jujitsu, I'm sorry.
I know, there's no way that they do jujitsu.
It's late, jujitsu.
Unless we have some very young seniors coming on board. I'm all for it.
Listen, I made you laugh.
I am, I am all, I am all for it.
I made you laugh.
I don't, I don't think that's gonna work.
No, I'm sorry, tai chi, I was thinking of my granddaughters.
Modified jujitsu, lady.
Tai chi.
Chair jujitsu, chair jujitsu.
Maybe we should open up a jujitsu class.
Chair jujitsu, I'm loving it.
Yeah, but tai chi classes are very, very popular. I think they're gonna help mobilize our senior citizens and bring them back to the way they, you know, were prior COVID-19. So I think that the first couple of weeks should be a very limited program, and then add one more event every week, like their bingo participation, their domino, their learning opportunities, and slowly but surely, bring them back to the way the program was running prior to COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Yes, ma'am. And that would be my recommendation.
All in favor of the, taking the manager's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, next item?
Item IA 11G, discussion refers to recommendation of expansion of route with use of cert...
Oh, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, that's gonna be deferred.
Deferred.
I, I'm sorry.
Would you like to defer for the May 19th meeting?
Yes. Uh, Jason did, uh, send an email confirming May 19th. I believe that the gentleman from Freebie may be on his honeymoon trip, so...
That's right, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item?
Item 12, consent agenda items non this evening. Item 13, good of the order.
Let's go home.
No, I do have something. Irregardless of our passion up here, I'm still happy we're all back in chambers.
Yes.
So...
Me too.
Uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Aye.